The Mobile City Council for Tuesday, June 30th, 2020. Please stand as we're led in an invocation by Dr. Jerry Hedrick, acting pastor of Westminster Presbyterian Church, and remain standing afterwards for the Pledge of Allegiance and the National Anthem sung by Kenley Tillman.
Good morning. I'd like to just tell you a short little happening this morning before we pray together. My 12-year-old granddaughter called it, I mean texted and said, "What are you doing this morning?" I said, "I'm going to pray over the city council and the mayor." And she texted right back and said, "Did he die?" My answer to her was, "Not yet." Oh God, who has been our help in all the ages past, and who is our only ultimate hope for this day in which we live. We come to you on behalf of the mayor of this city and the chosen servants of the people of this city. And we pray, God, that you would give them wisdom and knowledge to do what they need to do today, the things that will benefit all of the city of Mobile. We pray that you'd help us to understand that when all is said and done, you're still in charge. We pray your blessings upon the council collectively and each one. Whatever burdens they bear, we pray that you would ease them. We pray that you would guide them in their deliberations today and always. And as we live our lives, help us to remember that when we have done our best, we can do better. And we pray, God, that as we live our lives, we would live them to the fullest for as long as we're on this earth. But we look to the day when you come. Come, Lord Jesus, come. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, on my nation, under God, in the invisible, with liberty and justice And on this days leading up to our nation's birthday, we felt it appropriate to have someone sing the National Anthem. Now, since I've been in the council, that this has happened before. Thanks to the Tillman family for making this up.
Do we need to take it down there?
You can take this and take it down there.
He's gonna get mad at me if I don't do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, say can you see by the danture light, what so proudly held at the twilight's last gleaming, whose much stripes and bright stars through the perilous flight, oh, the ramparts we watched, oh, so gallantly streaming, and the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Yes, sir.
As we celebrate the birth of our nation on July the 4th, let us be mindful that the first person to die for America to become free was Christmas Addox. An African-American was the first person to die in the revolution that caused America to be free. Just wanted to make that sense. So much of the American history of the African-American struggle has been left out of the history books. I've had the urgency to share that with you. It was Christmas Addox the first person to die in the American Revolution.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Ms. Merchant.
Roll call, President Mancy. Vice President Small.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Daves.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory. Approval of minutes of the meeting of June 23rd.
So moved. Second.
They're properly moved in second. End of discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
End of polls. Passes. Right before you go, follow Ms. Merchant, I mean, read the statement of rules. Yeah. Hey, good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's a good day here in Mobile, Alabama. It's present, it's a good thing to see everyone here participating in city government on this morning. On the statement of rules, at this time, we ask everyone to please turn off all electronic devices before or upon entering the meeting. Any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution, ordinance, appeal, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his or her name and address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk office no later than 2:00 PM on the Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject he or she wishes to address must be identified and pertain to the city of Mobile business. Any person who has not given proper notice to the city clerk and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address the council. Each speaker is allowed five minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of four minutes. One minute remaining for summarizing. The second bell indicates the time has expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council member. All statements are to be made to the chair who will be, will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and or public outcry allowed. Madam City Clerk.
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning.
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 I'm glad there are several doctors in the audience today, and I hope the pastor would tell his granddaughter that my pulse is still beating, my heart's beating, and I'm in good shape. But there are probably more people that would like to kill me than there were previously. But we're trying to protect ourselves against that. And my remarks today are going to be solely directed at the wearing of face masks, which I know is a very divisive issue in the community. But considering the rise of the number of COVID-19 cases, you know, the CMOs of the hospitals, as well as the medical, County Mobile County Health Department, and a couple of members of the city council, you know, is that the encouragement of them that we bring this up, you know, for debate, fully recognizing that it is a controversial subject. But at the end of the day, we have a responsibility, you know, to protect our citizens. And we, as government officials, we receive all kinds of input on every issue. And because of the rise in cases again, and because of the fervent feelings among some about the wearing of mask, I felt it was important that we have this public debate. And so with that, we've invited the county, excuse me, the county health department and the chief medical officers of the hospitals to speak today. And so we will hear from them, and at the conclusion of remarks, either pro or con, I'll make some concluding remarks, you know, about the face mask. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
They're properly moved in second. End of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
End of polls. Passes.
Appeals, requests for waiver of the noise ordinance on July the 4th at 457 Charles Street from 3:00 to 10:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
They're properly moved in second. End of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
End of polls. Passes.
Public hearings today is, are the public hearings to fix the cause for the demolition or securing of the structures at 605 Patton Avenue, 1759 Waterford Street, 1462 Fairfield Street, 2905 Sherwood Drive South, 2918 Berkeley Avenue, 507 Euchre Street, 2058 Kentwood Lane, 3061 Pleasant Valley Road, and 406 Booker Street.
This is a public hearing. Do we have anyone in order to come down and speak on any of these public hearings that would just describe, obviously, the clerk? Yes, sir.
There might be some outside.
My name is Kelvin Buchanan.
Can you just leave it down? Yes, sir.
My name is Kelvin Buchanan. I'm on the, I live at 1013 O'Shea Road.
Yes, sir.
Speaking on behalf of 507 Euchre Street.
Yes, sir.
I am the owner of that property, someone that paid the tax deed on it. And I guess the city gave notice that there was some work needed to be done on the property. I never received notice. I guess the tax, the person that paid the taxes may have received the notice.
Yes, sir.
And when I went to redeem the property, that's when I was informed I need to come here to address the council on what I need to do as far as getting the matter with it straightened out.
How long you own the property?
For about 11 years.
11 years, you say, never received notice?
Right.
Mr. David, right behind you, he would can discuss the matters of this, the fixed cost of this and everything?
Okay.
And he'll discuss it with you.
Outstanding.
Yes, sir. City Clerk, is there, can we see if anyone outside for the public hearings? This isn't by the president. Do we have anyone inside this atrium that's here for the public hearings?
Tell me she was going to be.
Just going to double check to make sure there's no one outside wanting to speak.
Can they hear us out there?
It's being live streamed.
But can they just see us or hear us?
I can see.
See out here. Okay.
There's a time delay, but.
Well, we can be quiet, can't we?
They can't hear us out there.
No one's, okay. There's no one's present. Okay? Public hearings are now closed. Madam Clerk.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council.
Right before we do that, we're going to ask for Dr. Ishold to come down.
I've got a list of all the doctors.
Okay. But we want Dr. Ishold to come down, then followed by the rest of them from the Medical Society.
Okay.
Good morning. Bert Ishold, 165 South Georgia Avenue, Mobile, Alabama, health officer of Mobile County. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. This is day number 103.
Dr. Ishold, could you move the microphone a little bit closer?
Oh, thank you. This is day number 103 of the COVID-19 experience. We've averaged over this period of time, 3,661 cases divided by 103 is 35.5 cases per day since this event has started. Over the past two days, we've had over 100 cases of COVID-19 in our community, 102 on Sunday, 117 yesterday. So COVID-19 is being spread by community activity, and I'm here to request and support the city council's concept of having facial covering. It's been asked before in other areas, the health officer does have the authority to adopt a health officer's ordinance. Yesterday, on a call with the governor and with the state health officer, the governor declined and said it's really up to municipalities that have the arm to enforce it, and every single municipality within geographic area is slightly different than another municipality. And to try to cover with a big blanket, the whole community, as the governor's recommendation is that this process move forward. So I'm here to support the idea based on data that we do have continued spread of COVID-19 in our community, and the four hospitals that are in our community are all located within the city of Mobile. And the chief medical officers, whose duty in charge is to take care of the patients, will address, or Dr. Koulianis, who's president of the Medical Society, address the concerns that we have. And if we do not stop or slow down the spread of COVID-19, again, we're going to consume our medical resources and put people at significant risk. And unfortunately, we've had loss of life, and for those who've paid the ultimate price in loss of family and loved ones to COVID-19, that's what Mobile County Health Department is here to try to prevent further loss of life and protection of the health and well-being of the community. Not easy, 100 and some years since the last pandemic. It's worldwide affecting the economy and many, many other people. So thank you so much, city council members, for willing to consider, and the mayor for his introduction of this bill. And again, we just need to help encourage people by my wearing my mask and you wearing the mask, we're showing respect to other people. I may feel good, and you may feel good, but you don't want to give COVID-19 to somebody else. And there's a lot of asymptomatic spread of COVID-19 going on. So you may feel fine, but you're, by not wearing a face covering, you're disrespecting the other person's health and well-being and their right to be out in our community. So thank you very much, and I hope the, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Counsel.
Mr. Vice President.
Ms. Williams.
So, Doc, you're not going to do it for the rest of the unincorporated areas minus municipalities?
We probably will look at that closely.
I mean, it's urgent that we do it. You're telling us that, that we do it now.
Yeah. The major population, the major population at risk in our community is located within the city of Mobile. It is the largest geographic area. It has the four hospitals. It has the most food venues. It has the most entertainment venues. And so the, let's see if we can't do it in the city of Mobile and then see, measure the impact. And I would recommend that y'all consider doing it for a 30-day period of time with an option to be renewed based on data. We need to respond to this with science and knowledge and a little common sense. We don't have a lot of tools in our toolbox. This doesn't cost any money. It has no side effects, and it will help us limit the spread of disease. So.
Thank you. Thank you.
And a council member?
Yeah, Mr. Vice President.
Ms. Gregory.
Dr. Ishold, if you would explain again, a similar question to what Mr. Williams asked. I know in Birmingham, the health officer up there, in Jefferson County.
Right.
Just ordered it throughout the county, not just the city of Birmingham. And like in the city of Birmingham, Jefferson County, we have a lot of municipalities, a lot of outlying areas right here. And I know all of the cases that are reported are reported countywide, not just city of Mobile. So I understand what you're saying, that Mobile may be kind of an epicenter for, you know, this area. But if the cases are going up, they're not just going up in the city of Mobile, it would seem to make sense that the entire county would be covered rather than just the city of Mobile.
That if you look at what happened in Jefferson County, the municipality of Birmingham adopted a masking ordinance, I think it was over a month ago, worked in conjunction with other municipalities doing the same. And then as it's come along, that has filled in the gap in the puzzle based on data. We're proposing the same thing that can happen here, but we need to start with the city of Mobile.
Are you talking with the county commission, Saraland Sims, Chickasaw, Bydla Batry, all of the different municipalities?
Correct.
Because if we do it, I think everybody needs to do it.
I absolutely agree. And Dr. Howard Rubenstein, the mayor of Saraland, is the municipality liaison, and he has talked to all 11 municipality mayors. They all support the unified commands concept. They are waiting to see how this organization responds. And then the concept would be, the health officer would fill in the unincorporated areas as we go forward. But we've got to start with the largest, the largest municipality first, based on the governor's recommendation and that of the state health officer.
So you can't just, under your authority, order a countywide?
Mine, if you read the governor's order, which is going to be amended at 10:00 today.
I think she already.
Well, but, but in that order, it says that Mobile County and Jefferson County, with the approval of the state health officer, can do that. And right now, I had conversations yesterday with the governor on a conference call and with, Dr. Harris was on the call, and with members of UAB and other elected officials in the legislature. And that was the governor's statement, was that, you know, each municipality needs to consider on a case-by-case basis, because one shoe does not necessarily fit every single foot. So in a large county, there may be a municipality that does not have the problem, and so their appropriate elected officials need to consider it on a case-by-case basis. And then we, in public health, can help fill in the gaps as it goes forward. So I really hope you will support this, this ordinance in Mobile, the largest municipality, the places where we have the most disease. If you look at our zip code map, we put it out every single day. And so thank you very much for the opportunity to talk to you. And if there are any other questions?
Mr. President.
One second. Ms. Gregory, you finished?
Dr. Ishold.
Yes, sir.
Sorry. Dr. Ishold, thank you for being with us today. And I'd also like to thank the medical officers for being with us also today, and the chief of the Medical Society. What I understand you'd be saying is that someone's got to take the first step, that if you're Saraland, or you're Chickasaw, or you're Bydla Batry, it doesn't make any sense for you to ban masks if the city of Mobile ain't banning masks.
I think that's correct, sir.
And so, so I think the, I understand that the other municipalities in the county are going to look to us to act first as the 300-pound gorilla in the room, and then map their strategy based on that.
I think that's correct, but I cannot speak for the mayors of the other communities.
I understand. Neither can you.
And other council members? Dr. Ishold, I understand that you said that it's best for the city of Mobile to be the role model, the leader in the county. And with the 3,000-some-odd cases that have been confirmed, what is the percentage that is inside of the city?
I don't, I don't have that exact number, but we can get that to you. We track every single case, and we talk to every, all the people who have got COVID-19 or are in the process of communicating with them. But a majority of them are located within the city of Mobile.
Yeah, because that's, that's a question I know that's going to be asked, you know, among, you know, to me from different citizens, citizens that I represent, you know, if there's a, you know, vast number in Mobile that's leading in municipalities in Mobile County, what is the actual numbers inside of the city of Mobile?
I'll have to get you that number.
Okay.
I do not have that. But, but again, the majority of the population, I'll get, I will get you that number.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
My pleasure. And most are tracking, though, is by zip code. And if you look at the map, there may be some, you know, it's going to have to be an estimate, because sometimes the city limits did not follow exactly zip code demographics. So, so just know if you, we come up with X number out of the 3,000 cases, we say 2,000. That's will be as best as we can estimate by the zip code information that we track it with. So some of the, some of the zip codes are not in the incorporated area.
One other question. You had recommended that 30 days for us to try the mask. And from reading several articles, we know that the disease can be prolonged before the actually symptoms, it probably can just show up or before we show signs of sickness. And with the 4th of July coming up, I was reading an article where Memorial Day, a guy was attending a birthday party, and infected 18 people from that birthday party. And a couple weeks later, people in month of June was experiencing that. And rational, I believe that we are now higher than we ever been before.
Correct.
In 103 days. And so with the 4th of July that's coming up, I mean, so this, 30 days will be enough to actually, you know, show that this had worked from the 4th of July holiday, you know, with it being prolonged and showing symptoms?
I think 30 days would be an extremely short period of time, but I would like to give the opportunity for the city council to move this forward. If there are reservations saying it's proposed for the duration of the COVID-19, that we, again, if we can have an impact on the, on the spread of the disease, we look at it on a day-to-day basis, we look at a 14-day average. And the 14-day average just is interesting, is it, another thing, is it, Arizona, Texas, and the states, 16 states have passed recommended mask-wearing. They've had 84% increase in their transmission rates in the states where masks are recommended. In states where it's required, 11 states, they've had a 25% decrease in transmission rate. So how long we do this, I can't tell you, but I think we got to start. So that was my idea. I would love to say until the end of the COVID-19, but if it were easier for this council to have 30 days and see what we're doing, I'm perfectly, you know, supportive of that, with an opportunity to extend it for another, you know, 30 to 60 days based on data.
Let me ask you one other question.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, we have this on the agenda today and probably going to be held over, and they say that this does not pass before the 4th of July. And as of today, June the 30th, we at our highest peak we ever been at with this virus. If we do not pass this ordinance before the July 4th, one of the biggest holidays in the country, what you think could be, where would you think we might be sitting at a month from today?
I'd be, just a guess, we're at the point of having exponential growth of transmission of the disease on community base.
Hold on for one minute, please. I'm sorry about that, Doctor.
So we're on the, on the point of having exponential growth of community transmission of the disease. And if we don't do something, I'm very fearful that we'll have very high numbers of disease cases. So the sooner we act, the better. This is a special holiday weekend, and I would hope the council would consider acting before the holiday weekend so we can give the citizens the best advice and medical advice that we can in order to limit the transmission of COVID-19.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you.
Mr. Vice President, before Dr. Ishold goes, if you don't mind, you were talking about tracking and zip codes, and I know we've had some issues where nursing homes and assisted living facilities have had big outbreaks. Are those tracked by where that facility is located or by where the patient normally lives?
No, it's actually tracked by where the, the residence at the time is the facility's address.
So it's the facility's address.
So you'll notice 36605 has more cases, but those facilities are located within the city limits of Mobile, like our hospitals.
Right.
So we have, that's, again, an important component to this law.
But if somebody is found positive at a hospital, the hospital address is not used, it's their home address.
Correct. Their home, the home of record is used, so.
Yeah, but an assisted living or nursing home, their home address would be that facility.
Correct.
Right.
That facility is their home of records.
Right.
Because that's where they reside.
Yeah.
But I will try to get, before the meeting's over, I'll try to get the data about the city of Mobile, at least by the zip codes that are in the city of Mobile with the number of cases and have that to you before this is over with, sir.
We greatly appreciate it.
I have a question of Dr. Ischold, if I may. Thank you for being here. I know that this sort of reminds me of when you came out to address smoking in public places, and we had a lot of pushback about people's rights. And I respect that by all means. But can you tell me exactly what the mission of the health department is for our citizens here in Mobile?
Well, the mission of the health department is to prevent and the spread of disease and to help serve and protect the citizens of our community. So it's a very broad mission and it, this is probably, if we look at Mobile, this is not our first epidemic. This epidemic is not as bad as some of we've experienced. Yellow fever was by far harder on this community than COVID-19 is. But we've advanced medical science, we have more opportunities, we have better communications, but we have a denser population. At one point in time, we lost 40% of the population to yellow fever. That was a really bad day.
Right, thank you.
Thank you so much, doctor.
Thank you.
Dr. Koulianis?
My carbon dioxide levels are fine, even though I wear two masks. Esteemed city council members, Mayor Stimson, my name is George Koulianis. I represent the physicians of the Medical Society of Mobile County that comprises three-quarters of all the physicians who practice in Mobile, be they private practice, academic, or public health. We have worked to create a unified city, county, and public health as well as private medicine response, a partnership in Mobile to stem the outcome of this terrible disease. And that is the key to protecting our community, its citizens, and our livelihood. So why do we as physicians want to come to the city council chamber and ask for an ordinance now? We've been very carefully observing an uptick in new cases and hospitalizations. The percentage of patients that are testing and reporting positive for COVID-19 is the highest it's been since late May. We've gone from 9% to 13%. And for many of you, that might be a small number, but it's actually fairly dramatic. Remember, this is an exponential disease. It's not linear because it transmits so prevalently. Last week, we reported the highest number of cases ever in Mobile County, and just today, we set a record with 118 new cases. Most importantly, the one thing that we do not want to do and what the city cannot have happen, what the county, the region cannot have happen, is to overwhelm our hospitals. Although that did not occur this year earlier, when we had the significant increase in cases, presently, we're starting with a dramatically larger base of carriers. The sample size, the number of positives, is dramatically higher now. So that raises the risk that we can put our hospitals at risk. Timing is critical. We have very few tools in this box. There are only four. And one of them is getting ahead of the curve. You guys watch the news? You see what happens when you get ahead of the curve? It's dramatic, the difference in cases. Early responses are what save people's lives. And just according to the CDC yesterday, it was published this morning, the virus is spreading too rapidly and broadly for the United States to bring it under control. A large number of new cases is occurring in young adults who quite often have no or minimal symptoms. These asymptomatic individuals, in effect, become super spreaders. We know from the health department that those over 50 in our county account for 87% of hospitalizations and 98% of all deaths. And just looking around this room, there are a lot of you here that are over 50. The medical literature continues to gain clarity as it relates to the effectiveness of early intervention, wearing a face covering, washing your hands, and social distancing. This box only has four tools. Misuse any one of them, and the ship has already left. Early on, it was controversial whether someone with symptoms could transmit the virus, but we now know that this is clearly the case and accounts for a large percentage of community-acquired transmission. As these young adults interact with those of us that are older, we expect to see a fairly significant increase in hospital admissions, ventilator utilization, and deaths. The CDC just published new guidance two days ago. It was backed by 16 papers, and I will submit it for the record, that confirms that masks work. Just published on Sunday, the CDC recommends that people wear cloth face coverings in public and that cloth face coverings are most likely to reduce the spread of virus when they are widely used by people in public settings. Thus, the request for a mask ordinance at this time, early in the curve. Even researchers who voice some reservation about masks say, and I quote, "Mask is our best judgment right now." We only have four tools, again, I emphasize, in this box: early intervention, wearing a mask, social distancing, and washing your hands. Delay and don't use one of these tools, and bam, you are behind a very ugly curve and you cannot go backwards. Thus, the critical need for the ordinance now, especially before the Fourth of July holiday. And I would like to close by paraphrasing one of our frontline physicians. The ugliest part of this disease is its lack of predictability. One family member quarantines with minimal symptoms while the other is in the ICU fighting for their life at significant risk for dying alone. Thank you.
Doctor?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have some, the council has some questions. Ms. Rich, and then Ms. Gregory.
Ms. Rich.
Oh.
Ms. Rich and Ms. Gregory.
Okay, thank you. Can you talk about a lot of the emails we're getting in opposition is people's concerns about their carbon dioxide levels and when they wear a face mask or covering, or they say that they don't have the N95 and therefore it's not usable. Can you address some of that? Because that's really very widespread in this community.
So I find that kind of surprising because, you know, I operate every week for six, seven, eight hours at a time. And I wear two masks. I wear my N95 and I wear my cloth mask, or a hospital, a three-ply hospital mask. And so far, I think my carbon dioxide levels are fine. You know, I think that's just false news.
We are recommending through this ordinance that anyone two years older, older, and there have been some concerns about having it start at two for the masking. Can you give us the reasons why that is a good idea?
The CDC guidance says two.
Okay.
And also those with mental health issues, you know, disability, et cetera, are exempted. The ordinance actually is very well-written and follows the CDC guidance that was just published two days ago.
Okay, thank you.
So it was well-written. Thank you.
Thank you. And at what point are your thoughts on that the city would have to shut down again? What is that, like, tipping point to bring us just totally to shutting down, which was very traumatic and very devastating to the economics of our city?
Right.
And just people's psyche, the whole nine yards. It was massive. So where do you see that happening at the rate we're going or if, you know, if masks help?
Hopefully, the CMOs will address this, you know.
Okay.
And it's not very often that you bring this many people into this room. This is kind of a big deal.
Yeah.
You know, and during the Spanish flu pandemic, the medical society ordered the health officer to issue a quarantine order. That's what we did.
Yeah.
Because we are here to serve the public health. So we don't know where the tipping point is, but once we get to it, it's too late. And I can tell you, if this is a malpractice case and you are the physicians and you tell your patients not to wear a mask, you're losing, and it's going to cost you several million dollars. Just as an FYI.
So that's like a standard of care?
Correct.
That is being recommended by physicians?
When the CDC comes out and issues this guidance and makes it clear, and even when the opponents of masks say, "We don't have anything else to offer, but so far, we think it's pretty good." We don't know how good, and that's where the debate is.
Mm-hmm.
But it's better than nothing.
Right.
Then it's intuitive.
Thank you.
Ms. Gregory.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Koulianis. Appreciate that. As Mrs. Rich mentioned, we are getting a lot of emails for and against making masks mandatory. Those who are in opposition overwhelmingly are saying that, A, they don't think masks work, and they cite all sorts of experts. Some are from articles, some are dot-coms. I mean, I don't recognize a lot of the dot-coms, but also, they're saying they can't breathe, the carbon dioxide, I have asthma, it gives me headaches. I mean, I'm uncomfortable wearing a mask as well. I kind of get claustrophobic, but, you know, whatever. It's not my opinion that matters in this, as far as that goes. Also, do masks really work? I think you hit on that. So we get all of these questions and people citing various things that they see, a lot of it on social media, a lot of different articles that they cite and they post to uphold their stance in opposition. So can you hit on some of these? And also, the other one is the health department and Dr. Ischold, as I see at the door up there, they're saying that protect my freedom, not my health. We're getting people in opposition saying things like that. I know I've given you a lot, so maybe we can just kind of start and I'll refresh your memory on some of the questions.
That'd be great. So the ultimate gesture of love for your fellow men is to wear a mask. Now, some people are laughing at me cynically, but it truly is. Now, there's literature and there's literature. There's peer-reviewed literature. The studies I'm quoting come from peer-reviewed journals, and that's what the CDC used. So, you know, you can have the International Journal of Potato Chips and Macaroni and Cheese, and you can get your paper published. But that doesn't mean that the findings are going to stand the challenge of vigorous academic review. And what's happening is the research is moving so quickly, but it is very also quickly coming to a head and consolidating. So the consensus is that masks do work, because even the opponents agree to that now, and that was just a couple of days ago, in the proceedings of, if I'm not mistaken, the National Academy of Science. What we don't agree on is to what degree. But there's nothing else in the box. So if we're seeing this massive increases in cases now, it's a question of when, before the young adult curve inflects with the 50 and above-year-old curve, and then you get hospitalizations. You know, 18% of those that are 50 and above in Mobile County, according to our wonderful health department, end up in the hospital. And of those, half die. So all we have to offer is wearing a mask. And right now, while we're seeing this influx, this is the time to at least give it a month and see if we can calm it down. And then if the research changes, if we see the curve isn't doing what we're scared it's going to do, we can always take it back. You can never overrespond in a pandemic. You're protecting people's livelihoods by doing it, but you can underrespond. And once that's done, it's too late.
Mr. President.
Did I answer your questions?
Yeah, I think the only other one is protect my freedom, not my health. I mean, that may be something that you feel comfortable responding to, but that's just one of the emails that we get from people who are in opposition to us making this mandatory.
You know, that reminds me, this morning, this isn't, I'm saying this tongue-in-cheek, but I'm having to quarantine at Dauphin Island because there's someone in my family that's positive, and I've had two nasopharyngeal swabs and both of them have been negative. So this morning, before I came to work, I had three scotched waters, and then I was texting while I was driving. And I felt like it was an affront that it's against the law for me to have, my civil liberties have been violated. I just don't see how this is any different.
It's like smoking.
That's a pretty good one. You want to do it, can you say that again so that we make sure the media gets your quote?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. President.
Hold on, Mr. Richardson, Ms. Gregg.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson.
I wonder, Doctor, whether or not ventilators are less intrusive than a mask. Otherwise, the council is asking them, asking the citizens to wear a mask today. Tomorrow, it may not be a mask. It may be a ventilator.
Exactly.
And I don't, I don't think, have you ever had a patient who says, "Is my right not to go on a ventilator?" When the life, when life itself is threatening, I doubt if you've had any patient to question the ventilator. So is it, would you say that a mask is less intrusive than a ventilator?
Of course. I mean, it's obvious. A facial covering, I mean, it's just so simple. And wearing a mask is only one part of the solution. The other solution is to getting, you know, protective equipment to those in need.
Yeah.
That's important, and educating the community is equally as important. The new currency today in this economic crisis isn't necessarily dropping money from helicopters, although that's good. It's dropping masks from helicopters to protect our fellow man.
Thank you.
And my CMOs will follow now. Thank you.
Hold on one second.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Daze?
Yeah. I do thank you, Doctor, for also coming down on this morning. I do concur with you that many times, fortunately, I'm not the first responder, but I am a last responder. And many stories that I do hear and I do witness is that loved ones can't go to their loved one funeral because they're at home quarantined. And anything that we need, that we can do as a, you know, leaders in our city, we need to do, because there are many sad stories that have not been told yet that was out there floating around. But I do thank you for coming down this morning.
Thank you, sir.
I just want to make one other point about the idea that we're taking people's rights away, because we heard that with secondhand smoke. To me, your breathing particles that are let out for people who are asymptomatic or have a slight case is as though you are taking away the rights of the person that you will then inflict that with. And the message about smoking was the exact same thing. It wasn't so much that people couldn't smoke in an area, it's just that when that smoke went out, it caused lung disease. There were statistics that proved that. You've already proven the fact about the contamination and the cross-contamination. So I think when we talk about people's rights, it's when do your rights stop in order to protect somebody who is vulnerable and not letting that happen? And a mask does that, to a degree, that is, like you said, one of the tools in the toolbox.
Right. Does my right to not wear a mask supersede your right?
Right, to want to stay well.
To protect yourself? And all of a sudden now, are my rights greater than my neighbor's? That's not the way this country was founded.
Right, I agree. That's why we're able to pass public health laws.
Exactly.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Richardson.
We can say unequivocally that no one in this city has a right to harm another person. So you not having a mask So you not having a mask can harm someone else, your right has just ended. You don't have the right to harm nobody else. And for those who take joy in not wearing a mask, stay home.
Madam Clerk.
Dr. William Admire. How many we got? Can we concede that I'm going to say the same thing?
My name is Bill Admire. I'm the Vice President and Chief Medical Officer in Infirmary Health System. And I thank you, City Council, and Mayor Simpson, everyone attending. I thank my colleagues from Providence Hospital, Spring Hill Hospital, USA, and Mobile Infirmary for being here. And I think what we do is we come here respectfully to you as our leaders in this community. And you have a big responsibility, but I wanted to put some things in perspective. I heard what Dr. Kuliannis says, and I agree. The coronavirus is brand-new. It's a pandemic, it's global. It's affected 10.3 million people worldwide. Worldwide, over 530,000 deaths. In the United States alone, we're up to 2.5 million. We're 25% of the world's pandemic right now in USA. We're the number one, we're the hardest hit. We've had 127,000 deaths in this country. That is a lot of people, and it's going higher. In Mobile, I'm sorry, let's go Alabama, 36,000 cases of coronavirus, and we've had 917 deaths in Alabama. Mobile County, over 2,000 cases of coronavirus, 137 deaths. Worldwide, the mortality rate is somewhere between 0.6 and 1% mortality rate. We thought originally it was going to be around 2% to 3%, but as we test more, so that's where we're at. But one death is too many if we can prevent it. So I'm asking you to just listen to the facts, and when you make your decision, when you deliberate and collaborate and talk to your colleagues, you make a decision that's going to affect our community. When a doctor becomes a physician, they take a Hippocratic oath, and all it is is do no harm. And as leaders of community, you do no harm. You protect your citizens, you make decisions. It's not always perfect. I'd rather be overprotective and look back and say, "Hey, we were a little stringent, but we saved lives." If you save one life, that means a lot. We lose one life, or we lose another 100 or 200, then you say, "Oh, my goodness, why didn't I do something to prevent this?" When the facts are there. In the facts, in the United States right now, there's four states that are exploding, in order, I'll give them to you. Texas, Florida, Arizona, and California. In one week, they've doubled their cases. In Texas, 30% of the patients in the intensive care units are under the age of 50. Now, this is new, because we always thought it was the elderly with comorbidities. This virus is very virulent and contagious, and it mutates. Here in Mobile, we started in March, late March, Mobile Infirmary and the rest of the hospitals in town to prepare our, how we're going to handle this coronavirus pandemic. At the infirmary, at one time, on our fourth floor, we had 110 coronavirus patients, 27 on ventilators, and many of them died. And they died alone, because we didn't let any visitors in, because we couldn't have more coronavirus coming in for her or patients who don't have COVID on the other floors. And we still have a no visitor policy. We're going to hopefully change that. We can let essential visitors come in, our caretakers. So the cloth, this whole discussion about a mask, think of it this way. You're wearing a face covering. The CDC is backed by data and literature and analytics that show that it, all you, when you wear it, you're not protecting yourself from getting the virus, you're protecting you giving it to someone else. When you talk loud, you sneeze or cough, it goes across the room, right to the person in front of you. Mr. Small, I'm sorry if I'm not, but that is what is, that was happened. So you wear this cloth. Clinical and laboratory studies have shown data that it reduces the amount of exposure. So if this is happening, and we're having a surge across the southeast United States, across the border in the hot, the Sun Belt area, if we can make a difference in 30 days to mitigate, decrease the severity or number and contain, we've done our job. It's our responsibility, it's very important. You know, what is called is source control. The source of the virus, like Dr. Kuliannis said, is the asymptomatic spreader. And they're out there, and they're going to the local restaurants and stores and businesses and out in the community, and they're among people, they don't even know they have it, they don't know they're spreading it. So we need to protect our elderly, the people that have comorbidities. We do not, I, my personal opinion is, I don't want to see our country shut down again. I want to see our business up and thriving. We have a responsibility to do that. That's going to maintain the health of our community also. I'm not for closing down. I'm for being, if you make me wear a mask and you tell me that I have to do that in public, I'm going to do it, because you tell me how fast I can drive, you tell me when there's curfews, you tell me when there's a red light, stoplight, I do all the rules I'm supposed to do, I follow law and order, and I'm willing to do this if this makes a difference in saving lives in Mobile County and our region. And with that, any questions?
Counsel.
Yes, Mr. Vice President.
Ms. Gregory.
In thinking about the new cases that are being, coming online that you're seeing in the hospital, I know when all of this started, the whole thinking was we need to flatten the curve.
Yeah.
Flatten the curve, make sure that there aren't that many people being found positive and having to go to the hospital, which would then overload our ICUs and that sort of thing. And so, you know, people are questioning, "Well, didn't we flatten the curve? Aren't our hospitals in good shape? Don't they have enough equipment?", that sort of thing. So are you telling us that you're seeing an uptick? Are we in danger of our hospitals not having enough ICU beds? And then, and with that, somebody with a heart attack, are they going to have a bed at the hospital as well?
That is an awesome question, very good question, because that's looking at public health and how we manage our hospitalized patients who are sick. Yes, the hospitals now have capacity, but we're getting high as far as our capacity. At the infirmary, we're 430 patients today, and I'm sure South, Spring Hill, and Providence are probably at close to 80, 90% of their capacity. But we still have a few beds open for our COVID patients and our non-COVID patients. But we have to realize, there's other disease processes going on. The community's still alive and vibrant. People are still having heart attacks, strokes, having babies, getting in car accidents. All these things are happening, so we need to contain and mitigate so we can still take care of our non-COVID patients. And for two months, people were not going to the hospital. Why? Because they were afraid. If I go to, the hospital has COVID patients, I might get it. So they stay at home and they're having chest pain. True story. A week ago, a doctor in the ER was telling me that an 80-year-old man drove his wife to the ER, and he came to the ambulance bay and he said, "My wife's in the car, she's not doing well." Of course, ER personnel go out, she was there, she was blue, she was gone. And he said, "Well, I would have brought her earlier, she was sicker, but I was worried about the COVID virus in the hospital." He lost his wife. So, yes, we need to keep the capacity that we can take care of our COVID patients and our non-COVID. If we get an explosion, an upsurge of coronavirus, then that hurts everyone. That hurts our hospitals and our other patients that need to come in, but we'll do what we have to do. And, but it's made a big change. People are putting off elective surgery, people put off going to the dentist, people put off going to the clinic when they have blood pressure problems and they have, they have, they're even affecting their rehab for illnesses they've had in surgery. So thank you.
Mr. President. Yes, Mr. Daze.
Dr. Admire, thank you for being here today. Just to go back to Councilwoman Gregory's question, my understanding is that hospitalizations and deaths are lagging indicators, and that when you, if you see a spike in infections, it's going to be a while before you see a corresponding spike in a-hospitalizations and deaths. Is that correct?
Yes.
Which gets back to the, one of the issues we've been talking about here is that, is the problem with this is that once you realize you have a problem, it's too late. So, so if we get to the point where the hospital's full, it ain't going to cap out there, because you're going to have all these people that got infected a month ago showing up later on at the hospital, and the hospital's all full. So the time, the time to take action is now and not when the hospital fills up.
You said that very well, Mr. Davies, that's correct. And if you've noticed, who was hit first? Jefferson County back in March, and then came along Mobile County, and the city, the mayor and the council and everyone, Board of Health, Dr. Ischold and the doctors and the administrators of hospitals, we reacted. And we, we shut things down a little bit for a period of time, and we went down. Right now, we're no longer the highest numbers in the state of Alabama. Number one right now is Jefferson County today with over 4,000 cases. Number two is Montgomery. Number three is Mobile, and number four is Tuscaloosa, in that order. And so, this virus is going to go up and down based on hotspots and how people are practicing out in the community, how they're, whether they're social distancing and practicing these good hygiene methods and whether they're wearing masks, it's going to make a difference. Thank you.
Another council member?
I do have one question. You was calling out some numbers earlier and watching the news on last week, that states like New York is now asking people from several states such as Alabama was named, was on the list, as to have them quarantined for 14 days before exploring their state. Could you, can you tell us why, or do you know why they chose Alabama? I mean, versus?
For a week ago, when they, I think we had a surge, and we were like, there was three states. It was Alabama, South Carolina, and Oklahoma at one point had a quick surge, then they talked about Alabama. And it was, I think it was not too long after Memorial Day weekend, the beaches were open, and all of a sudden we had a surge, so they talked about our state and what we're doing with that. And did that answer your question?
Yeah.
I'm not sure if you want to clarify a little more, and maybe I can?
Yeah, I kind of can get to just other.
That's what it was. And then now, it's shifted a little bit to, like I said, Texas, California, Florida right now.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you so much for coming down.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Todd Kennedy.
Thanks for having me. I'm Todd Kennedy. I'm the President and CEO of Providence Health System. We're at 6801 Airport Boulevard, and behind me in white coats are the smarter people in the room, my leaders, physician leaders from the hospital. Dr. Red Balls is our Chief Medical Officer, Dr. Stone is our CMIO, and Dr. Coleman is the head of our hospital at service. I come to you today wearing a mask, which you can plainly see, but also wearing mini hats that you can't, so I want to talk a little about, a little bit about those, because they may show my biases as well. My first hat is that of a husband, I've been married for 18 years this week, to a wonderful woman that unfortunately fights lupus, a chronic condition for which there is no cure. The therapies associated are designed to reduce the immune system response, which means by default, she is immunocompromised and does not need to contract COVID-19 because she is at high risk. The other hat I wear is that of a father of 14 years. I have two boys that both attend UMS Wright, a 14-year-old and a rambunctious 11-year-old, both of which are ready to go back to school. This is the first year in their life that they're ready to go back to school. They're tired of being cooped up, but they're also afraid, because they've heard of many of their friends that have become infected with COVID even prior to starting school, because families are gathering and having parties. Finally, I'm wearing the hat as CEO of Providence Health System. We are a private faith-based organization that has been in operation in Mobile for over 165 years. We have clinics located across the region and into Mississippi and Baldwin County, as well as have a very busy 349-bed licensed acute care facility with a very busy emergency department that sees over 54,000 visits a year. I say all that to say that I have a very vested interest in seeing the eradication of COVID-19 from our community as quickly and as effectively as possible, to protect my children, to protect my own wife, and to protect the community that Providence serves. But honestly, as I've shared with the mayor, I've been very disappointed in the last month, as most of Mobile at this time, I believe, believes, based on their actions, that this disease is not a threat and are no longer practicing safe behaviors and are no longer wearing a mask or social distancing. Providence Health System stood up our command center on March 13th and was the first facility to close elective cases and began limiting visitation a week before the governor's order. We did that because we did not, did not know what we were going to face, and we still, frankly, do not know a lot about this disease, but we've learned a whole lot in the last 90 days. I appreciate the individual in the back there pointing out the first death in the Revolutionary War. The first instance of death in our community occurred in the first three weeks of the COVID infection. That man's name was Mr. Timothy Gaston. He was an incredible man, a man who I knew for over 10 years, a man I would hold out as an example of what we all hope to be as leaders, as husbands and as fathers. He was the first who died of this disease in our region and served on Providence Health System board for over a decade, as well as was our past board chair. If I had any doubt about the severity of this disease, in the early days, it disappeared when Mr. Gaston passed away. He should still be with us today, but he was infected, and he is not. What I know about COVID-19 as a disease is that it does not care. It does not care about you. It does not care about our social situations. It does not care about your political affiliation or who you voted for, your race, your color, your creed, or what God you pray to. It only does one thing, it replicates. It spreads through contact as we gather at parties, as we gather to pray with one another, as we teach our children and grandchildren, as we meet to commune with one another, it spreads. It spreads in a hug and in a kiss, and it doesn't rest. It doesn't take weekends off, it doesn't pause on Sunday to pray, it doesn't break for lunch, it never stops, it never sleeps, it does not care. The President of the United States has said we're at war with COVID-19, and we have no weapons, we have no offense. There is no bullet, no tank, no bomb that we can combat this enemy with. Make no mistake, once you contract COVID-19, there is very little we can do for you in healthcare but try to manage your symptoms, as there is no cure. We have given both remdesivir and plasma to patients of Providence who have, over time and weeks, have recovered, and we have given remdesivir and plasma to patients who have died. So there is no offense, and unfortunately, as others have pointed out, for Mobile and the great state of Alabama and the rest of the country, we have a very weak defense, as we can no longer fall back to closing down our businesses across the city and state and country, as we have tried that and created from that the largest economic crisis in recent history. I told you I have a unique perspective, and one of the hats I wear, that of the CEO of a health system, as I only have three counterparts across the city. And uniquely to us and our health systems, the localities, state, and federal government requires that daily, we get up and report our ICU capacity, our total number of COVID-infected, our PUIs, our ventilator capacity, and the number of dead. And as I've told the mayor, I am extremely tired of counting the dead. If you contract the strain of this disease that sends you to the hospital statewide, as has been stated, you have somewhere between a 30 and 40% chance of death. So how do you win a war with no offense and a weak defense against a disease that does not rest and does not care? I can tell you, I've prayed quite a bit about that, and I've come to only one answer. We as a population, and specifically, we as leaders, have to care more. We have to care more about one another than our political parties and politics. We have to care more about saving human life and being popular. We have to care more about setting the example as leaders than taking the easy way out. Masking for the CDC reduces the chance of infection, period. It is the only defense we have not played, as unfortunately, it's become a political volleyball. We will have to care more than the politics of that. We have two known spikes coming. One is 4th of July, and two weeks after that, and one is two weeks after school starts back. The question now is how big will those spikes be? Will we have taken all actions possible to look at our children and our community and let them know we have tried everything? Masking can diminish those spikes. I fully admit, it may not prevent them, but it can lessen them. The only way to protect our children about to go back to school and their parents and their grandparents is to care more and to try. I stand before you as a father of two, as a husband to a wife who is immunocompromised, and as a CEO of a hospital system, that daily has to count a horrible tally. I ask you to care more about our community and try passing a masking ordinance, no matter how unpopular. Thank you.
And council members?
Yes.
Ms. Rich?
Thank you. Thank you for your statements. It's quite eloquent and really on target and on point on multiple levels. The way I view this, and perhaps, no, I do think this is correct. It's as though doctors are coming to us and writing a prescription, and one of it includes utilizing a mask as part of that tool to make you well. So it's really not a question, but I just wanted to thank you, because your words were, like I said, very eloquent. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one question. I understand you said that there will be two spikes, one after the 4th of July, and also the second one after school started. Have you all reached out to the school board with your concerns about the second spike?
I think, I mean, from what I heard from the state superintendent, they're very aware of the risk of the spike happening and have plans to address shutting down classrooms, cleaning classrooms, sending kids back home, or allowing families to choose a virtual method of teaching. So I think they're aware it's likely to happen. They stated in press conference on the news last week that it's likely to happen. So, you know, again, I have two children of my own, I don't want that to happen. My conversation around the dinner table at night because of my wife is, can we even afford to send our kids back to school? You know, should we homeschool to protect? Should we homeschool to protect her? Because really, that's what we're doing through masking, is protecting those around us, not ourselves. And I do worry about the ability to social distance and mask enough in school systems to protect the kids. So I don't think there's a good answer for that, because I don't believe shutting down school systems is the right answer either, but I think they need to take all steps necessary to protect the lives of the kids as they go back.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Rich?
Dr. John Stone?
I'm Dr. John Stone. I'm the CMIO and physician advisor of Providence Hospital. Rather than go back over so many other things?
Could we get an address from you also? An address?
Oh, I'm 3662 Stein Avenue in Mobile.
Thank you.
One thing I did want to emphasize that was mentioned before, and this is another personal really happened experience. We had a patient that came to Providence, had an acute heart attack, went through the usual cath lab, standing, what have you. And he was so sick, then had emergency surgery, he did not survive. The important part is that he had started having pain, significant pain, on Friday before all this happened. He waited through the weekend and did not come to the hospital until Sunday. So he had, you know, several days there where he was having significant chest pain, where any other time, he'd have gone to the emergency room and gone through the whole process. He had a single vessel coronary disease, but it's the one that gets you, the Whittaker routine. So he got operated on, but he had a post, well, I don't get into all the, but the muscle had already died, and so it ruptured, and he did not survive. It was a simple thing if he had come in at the time, but I guarantee you, he did not come because of the fear of COVID. So anything we can do to decrease the spread, it affects not just the COVID people, but people with other issues. So I just want to make that point. Questions?
Counsel?
Thank you so much, Dr. Stone, for coming down.
Dr. Isaac Ball?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Mayor. Thank you very much for giving us this opportunity to speak. I'm Isaac Ball, 1630 Rockstone Lane, Mobile 36695, and I'm the current Chief Medical Officer of the Providence Health System. A lot has been said about, a lot of things about the social part, the social distancing, and then the facts about the disease, but I come to you as a concerned physician, as a concerned father, and as a concerned citizen. We talked about source control, and this mouth and respiratory system is the source. This cannot talk back to me, it won't give me back anything, but a person will. And precisely what we're talking about is a situation where you cannot do social distancing. That's the place that we're talking about. So I want to bring back the focus to the mask again. So the source control is really required where you are going to be in a closed room with other people, and you cannot social distance. So we're not talking about people walking on the street or on a beach away from other people. Just to cite you a couple of examples, we started testing people at the hospital and statistically found out that suddenly, we had a cluster of five cases, and all of them were found to be in one room where patients were coming in after being screened, after being asked about fever or any respiratory symptoms. These patients were coming into a room where a nurse was taking their blood pressure and then sending them onwards into the emergency room, and we made masking mandatory for these patients. So the physicians, the staff, the patients were all masked. However, these nurses in the triage room began to get infected, because although they were wearing a mask, the virus lives on surfaces. So we found out in that room, and then relocated them to an outside area to do that part. So data is suggesting that the virus can actually hang around in the air for almost one hour as a droplet, and then between three and five hours on different surfaces. So this is how it is really spreading. The people who are known as asymptomatic is probably an erroneous term. Pre-symptomatic is probably the right term, because many of these patients, about 44% of them, go on to become symptomatic within a couple of weeks. And the highest shedding period has been known between two and three days after exposure. So think about it, you don't know you have it, you're walking around, and now you're talking to other people as if you don't have it. That's where the problem comes in, and that's why we're talking about masks. You know, similarly, I mean, if you would like your surgeon to operate without a mask and suddenly sneeze on an open wound, that's the analogy we're talking about here. We started testing every patient who came in for an elective procedure. We had postponed everybody who was scheduled for surgery back in March for almost 60 days. You can't keep them away forever, you have to bring them back. So we did, and we said, let's test every single person who comes in for an elective procedure, because the cost of cleaning up an OR and shutting down pieces of the hospital is too much. Well, we found out that in the first 200 or 300 tests, there were at least 14 people who were positive, and they had no symptoms. They were coming in for little procedures that had to be done. Statistically, we extrapolated that number, and if you think of the population of Mobile County as about 4.5, 5 million, that's about 2,000 people walking out there who don't know they have it, they're positive. They may never have any symptoms, and they'll pass it on to the next person. So pandemics require a change in behavior. Think about HIV. We still don't have a vaccine for HIV. Yeah, we've got drugs about 30 years later, but people had to change behavior to be able to control that. And in the past 20, 21 years that I've been in Mobile, we've had, I mean, you can count five or six different epidemics. SARS-1, Zika virus, the bird flu, SARS-2, Ebola. I mean, these are actual epidemic. MERS, we had two cases, and fortunately, no more after that in the US. So, and you mentioned New York and California. Yet, New York doesn't want anybody else coming in, because initially, this is the graph of New York, and this is where we were, but now we're going up, and New York is down here. So those are the graphic representations of what their caseload is. So they are quarantining people who come in from even these states. And then if you move to the history of New Zealand and Sweden, it was one sweeping action. They shut down everything for four weeks, and New Zealand, I believe, on the 1st of June declared that they had zero COVID cases. There was one more case that traveled from Malaysia to New Zealand, and they are quarantining those people. So that's how contagious this is. There were people talking about the likeness of flu. It is not flu, it is about 10 times more contagious. So there is a strong evidence that supports masking, and that's why we wear it in the operating rooms, when we isolate people with other infections in different rooms, that's why we wear masks, so we don't take it from one room to the other. And same goes for hand washing and other measures that we take. So this is really a healthcare debate between scientists and physicians, and less of a debate of civil rights, because I'm taking your rights away by transmitting this. And you gave a very good example of smoking, and same as driving, if you're reckless, you're causing trouble. And then again, how many people die of smoking and driving? Very large number. Do we shut down driving? No, we make laws, we put on signals and traffic lights, and control that behavior as best as we can, and then create a process of accountability, and bring on fine people and whatever else we can do to control that behavior. And this is really what we're talking about, behavior change. So, and again, in New York, there was one piece of data that showed that there was an 800% increase in cardiac arrests outside the hospital during the past three, four months. So that's how people are changing their behavior, that they are living with their other diseases, so scared of COVID that they don't want to go seek help. And I wonder why they wouldn't change behavior to control the very disease that is preventing them, and making them change other types of behaviors. We can't shut down the schools forever. I have an 18-year-old disabled daughter who doesn't know how to wear a mask, and I know how hard it is going to be for us to send her back to school, to the learning tree. Every day, we're talking to the teachers and trying to come up with plans, best plans for those 30 or 40 kids who are going to go back to this facility. And businesses cannot shut down. You'll have riots in no time, and we did that three months ago, and we don't want to do it again. There are three members up here who are part of my council for limited resource use of equipment. I don't want to sit in the hospital and decide who gets a ventilator and who does not. But believe us, we actually wrote that piece of paper as to how we would proceed with decision-making if it came down to that, if I had to decide who gets the ventilator and who does not. So we have to reopen, and this is really a push to help the city and all of us to reopen. So if someone wants to fault me and anyone else here for being over cautious about this, we'll take the heat. I'll stop there.
Any questions for Dr. Itoh?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Dr. Coleman?
Good morning. I'm Dr. James Coleman. I'm the medical director of the hospitalist program at Providence Hospital, one of the frontline physicians helping to treat patients at Providence Hospital. Address 6750 Stoneridge Court here in Mobile, Alabama, 36695. What I was going to say, most have already said, but what I want to mention is that we have a fixed number of ICU beds in Mobile. We have a fixed number of ventilators in Mobile. And I don't know the exact numbers, but I think, you know, we'd be surprised at how few we actually have. We still have people getting sick from other medical conditions. They're not going to stop getting sick. Our ICUs are fairly full of people that are sick with heart problems, other forms of pneumonia, kidney failure. Now, we are going to see this surge in COVID patients, and we're already seeing that. We know those patients stay in the intensive care unit longer. When they require an ICU stay, when they require a ventilator, they tend to not come off the ventilator very quickly. They tend to not leave the intensive care unit very quickly. So it will not take many patients to get sick and need to be in an ICU before we have maxed out our capacity to provide the level of care that patients need. And that is why, to me, it's very important that we pass this ordinance to mask individuals in the community. The most people that are spreading are young, middle-aged people that don't have medical problems, and they generally don't have symptoms. They're the ones that are less likely to wear a mask voluntarily, but they are also the ones that are spreading it. They're the super-spreaders. They spread it to other asymptomatic people, and then you've got two people spreading it, then you've got five people, and then they take it to their grandparents, or somebody who is chronically ill with diabetes, heart failure, kidney disease. Now we know obesity is a risk for complications from COVID. And so we have a lot of people that are sick chronically, with chronic illnesses in our community. When you start spreading it to them, they're the ones that are going to be in the ICU, they're the ones that are going to require the ventilator, they're the ones that are going to have the prolonged stay, and then we're going to lose our capacity and our capabilities to take care of other people that will be coming in, requiring our assistance. It is our duty, I believe, as physicians, you know, we take the hypocritical oath, it is our duty to do no harm, and I think it is our duty as leaders to do what is the right thing. Sometimes, it's not the easy thing to do, but we know it is right, and I think this is one of the few things we have available to us to try to limit the spread of this virus, and to protect our hospitals as well as our community, because our hospitals need to be able to function, to continue providing the, you know, the care that the citizens of Mobile deserve. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Capeta?
Madam Chair, how many more speakers do we have?
Six on this subject.
Just, and all is the doctors or just citizens and doctors, or?
There's one more doctor after Dr. Capeta, and then there's some citizens after that.
Okay. We're going to ask special doctors, if, not just to repeat, if things have been stated before, but we can just try to keep it down less than five minutes if possible, because it's already noontime, and we've got a whole agenda to cover. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you all so much for having me today. I'm Laura Capeta, the Chief Medical Officer for the Mobile County Health Department, address is 251 North Byers Street, 36603. Thank you all again for having all of us today.
Can you put your microphone down just a little bit? Yeah, sorry about that. Thank you.
How's that? Okay, I'll keep it very brief. As all the other physicians, my colleagues have done a terrific job, and I just wanted to speak to something which you all may be very aware of, but we receive calls on a daily basis from a lot of citizens who want to call to let us know about a particular business, if they feel it's not following the governor's safer-at-home order with regards to distancing or masking policies, and because of that, they, you know, they don't feel safe, and so they're not out participating in the economy, because they consider themselves high-risk, whether it's because of age or medical conditions. And so, you know, because of that, I think that this is not just a health and medical issue, but I think it's an economic one, and I think that's something that shouldn't be ignored, that there is a significant portion of the community and the population that's not participating, that is essentially still quarantined at home, because they're, you know, if you want to say they're riots, they don't feel they're being respected, or they don't feel safe participating. So I think that with that in mind, that having a masking ordinance allows everyone to be out and feel safe and participate in the economy, in addition to all the other points that have been made so eloquently by my fellow physicians. Is that quick enough?
Thank you.
Good.
Mr. Vice President?
Ms. McGregor.
I'm having a little trouble hearing you.
Okay.
Up here. These microphones are not very good.
Yes.
So you're saying that you hear from people a lot who say they go into a business, or they attempt to go into a business?
Yes.
And don't feel safe, so they are not participating?
Yes.
Are they turning businesses in, or?
They are calling to report them, yes.
But you're hearing from people who say, I don't feel safe, therefore, I'm not going to go out to shop in a brick-and-mortar store?
Yep.
So you're seeing that?
Absolutely. Every day.
Every day. Are you also here to talk about masks? Because one of the things, we've already gone over some of this, but there are a lot of questions about masks and the myths about masks, whether they work, they don't work, a cloth mask versus another kind of a mask, and carbon dioxide, what goes in, what goes out, you know, all those sorts of things that we read about.
Well, I mean, if you have specific things you want me to speak to about that, I can. I mean, you know, oxygen and carbon dioxide are dramatically smaller particles than, you know, any sort of virus or bacteria.
Because one of the things, we've already gone over some of this, but there are a lot of questions about masks and the myths about masks, whether they work, they don't work, a cloth mask versus another kind of a mask, and carbon dioxide, what goes in, what goes out, you know, all those sorts of things that we read about.
Well, I mean, if you have specific things you want me to speak to about that, I can. I mean, you know, oxygen and carbon dioxide are dramatically smaller particles than, you know, any sort of virus or bacteria, so it depends on what sort of mask you're talking about in terms of exactly what sort of filtration it is. So, but definitely, any sort of mask is not going to impede oxygen. If you think that it's going to let the virus out, it's going to let oxygen in and out, that much I can guarantee you. You know, for years, as a surgeon, I wore a mask eight hours a day with no problem. As Dr. Cooliana spoke to so eloquently, this is something that we've been doing to protect our patients for years with no repercussions. You know, we don't wear those to protect ourselves, we wear it to protect our patients with no harmful effects, so.
Right. And of course, you know, people still, I think, are confused about the message, because we still hear, "Well, they don't protect me," or "I'm healthy." What's wearing a mask going to do for me? So I think your message is still not quite getting through.
Well, I think the idea is that a lot of people who think they're healthy may be infected and just be asymptomatic, and we've seen a significant increase in asymptomatic infection, you know, up to 40% of what we're seeing locally recently is asymptomatic infection. That is what caused such a problem in our long-term care facilities in Mobile County initially, and so the Health Department initiated testing of all employees for all long-term care facilities that would accept that, to try to keep that from being a problem, because a lot of, you know, maybe healthy people don't get sick when they're infected. You can be infected with coronavirus and not be sick. So you may feel fine, but that doesn't mean that you're not infected, that doesn't mean that you can't spread it to someone else who could then get very sick and even potentially die. So that's, that's the purpose of it, is to try to prevent transmission to someone else who might not be as healthy as you. And, you know, people who look fine might have underlying medical conditions and might not be as healthy as they look, but I think they still have a right to, you know, get out and go to restaurants and go shopping if, you know, we have a masking ordinance.
Thank you.
Finish, Ms. McGregor. Ms. Rich?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Capeta. When the medical community opened up for elective-type surgeries, they started doing the testing
Yes.
on all patients. And what percentage came back with people who were, did not show any symptoms? Is that the 40%?
No, no, that's not the 40%. That's, that was just within the, the community. So, so when you're still talking about the, like, the pre-procedural testing, those are the people who are kind of the healthiest of the healthy. Those are people who are
Coming in for elective.
going in for a surgery, completely, you know, elective surgery, and you would have zero thought that they would, they would have passed every screening test
Sure.
that you could have. They wouldn't have a sniffle of any kind, and so those, you would expect 0% to be positive. I think the number was 8% of those were positive.
Okay, so that's high.
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, that was a very surprising number to put that.
Right. And that's something that should go into the equation too, because these people are walking around, like you said, just totally
Yes.
ready to have whatever else is troubling them
Yes.
corrected.
Absolutely. And the data that we know, and again, you know, when we're talking about data in a pandemic, it's all a little messy. We don't have the great randomized controlled trials that we'd like to have in medicine, so you have to factor all that in. But just what we've seen in terms of studies where people have had surgery when they are infected with COVID-19, for especially elective surgery, the mortality data has been 20% to 25%, which is tremendously high and abnormal.
Right.
I mean, that's unheard of.
Right.
So, I mean, these are, these are, you would expect, you know, single-digit numbers.
Right. So it's that kind of information that's coming into the databank
Right.
that tells you that if we don't do something, even though it's a tool that some people feel is, you know, disrespectful to their rights, it does help others, and
Right.
it is something that can contain some of that contagious environment.
Right. And it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't need to be forever. I mean, this is
Right, temporary.
Right, 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 right. Yeah, and it could mitigate something, you know, much bigger.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Davis?
Yeah, thank you. Doctor, I just want to make sure I understand, I'm going back to the folks that came in for elective procedures
Yes.
and got tested. So, I went in to the Mobile Infirmary a couple of weeks ago for an elective procedure and was tested for the virus three days ahead of time, something like that, was negative. But that doesn't mean that I didn't have the virus two months ago.
That's true.
I didn't have it that day they tested me, but I could have had it two months ago and been asymptomatic and recovered from it, and it wouldn't have shown up on that test. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice President?
Ms. McGregor.
Before, before you go, wearing masks is a tool, but another tool, of course, is the social distancing.
Absolutely.
So I am more than six feet away from you, more than six feet away from Mr. Williams, Mr. Small. Do I need to be wearing my mask right this second? Because we're not up here.
Right. So, you know, it depends on a lot of factors, you know, to be absolutely certain, or, I mean, there is no absolutely certain, let's say that. To be more careful, you would be. You're not yelling, though, you have a microphone. There are a lot of factors that go into it, voice projection, you're not facing him, so, you know, you're talking to the back of his head. There are a lot of very sort of common sense things that go into that decision-making. So, you know, yelling, singing, those, those things all project a lot more droplets, like sneezing would, but speaking in a normal tone, you know, there's not a lot of, a lot of droplets. But, and again, if you've got the back of his head and his chair, there's very low chance. All of that sort of decreases the risk.
And I guess too, in grocery stores, because all the grocery stores have remained open, big-box stores have remained open, and they've all been very, very busy, and in a lot of cases, it's impossible to stay six feet away from somebody when the aisles are narrow and people are going back and forth, a lot, just not paying attention. So, wear masks in these stores, but if you can stay six feet away from someone in a store like this, you still say, wearing the masks no matter what in these types of situations is what you need to do.
Well, and a lot of stores are having the one-way aisles, and that's kind of the same idea with you, you know, being, facing the back of his head, because you're really not ever crossing and getting that, you know, that face-to-face interaction, so that cuts down on the risk significantly.
Now, if the one-way aisles was actually enforced, possibly.
Right, right, well, that's, that is the goal or the assumption. Yes.
I do have a question.
Ms. McGregor?
I'm finishing.
You know, Councilman Davis said he went to the hospital and got tested a couple of days before he had his elective procedure. And I also heard stores where people had got tested days before. I also heard one store where a person had got tested days before the surgery, and then after the surgery, they was tested again and got positive in the hospital. So it does like, if I was tested today, is it possible that I could be, the test could come back negative and Thursday could be positive? I mean, I had heard those type of stories also, so.
It's, it's possible. I mean, there's a window of exposure from the time that you're exposed until the time that your, your test turns positive. So that's partly when, when your testing takes place, because they want to know as soon before your surgery, you know, how, they want to get you in that sweet spot to have the very best chance, but there's always a possibility that you're in that window where you might be exposed, but your tests wouldn't have turned positive yet.
Yeah, all right.
There's that, there is a risk. And if you look at the CDC's guidelines for quarantine and testing, it talks about the ideal days for, for testing, because you're not, you know, if you're exposed to someone who's positive, you don't run out and get tested, because it's probably going to be negative. You wouldn't, even if you were going to be positive, you wouldn't be positive yet.
And what's the recommendation time?
Not before seven days.
Not before seven days.
Right.
I have another, I have a question.
Ms. Rich?
Thank you. And this is something, reading off the internet, which isn't always safe, but if, if somebody is going to be in a, in a location without social distancing, does it matter how long they're in that location as to, you know, they're getting the virus or getting a worst-case scenario of the virus?
That's a great question. It does. The, the guidelines are six feet and 15 minutes.
Okay.
So if you can, you know, limit any one interaction to less than 15 minutes, that really cuts down on the odds of exposure.
Okay, thank you.
And that's, that's actually what our contact tracing people use to determine who is an exposure.
Okay.
If someone is a positive.
It's good to know. Thank you. Sure.
You know, councilmembers? Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for having us today.
Dr. Mike Chang?
Thank you. I promise I'll be brief. I'll try to keep this to less than 90 seconds. First, a message from Dr. Ickold. He said, "70 to 75% of the positive tests come within zip codes for Mobile." Did I say that right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Foundationally, there are really two points that I'd like to get across today, and you guys have hit on all of them and done a really nice job. One is about messaging. Fundamentally, this is a safety issue. Safety is the prevention of harm, and as best we know, there are three or four things we can do to keep the public safe. Now, if you go to Ostell and you take a tour of the Ostell factory, every 100 feet or so, you'll see a poster or placard about worker safety. All of us that are chief medical officers and leaders in our healthcare systems, we're responsible for the quality and safety of the care of our patients get, so we're always pushing safety. We're asking you as leaders to help in your roles within the community in a, in a major safety issue, and the safety issue here is simply prevention of a fatal disease, and the way we do that is simple: masks, social distancing, vigorous hand washing, and avoiding crowds when you can. So foundationally, from a messaging standpoint, this is pretty simple. It's a safety issue for the public. The second thing I'd like to say is, again, very brief, is that since May the 1st, the number of patients hospitalized in the state of Alabama from COVID-19 has been steadily increasing. So it had plateaued off in late April, and it's been going up again since, since May the 1st, predominantly after about May 7th to 14th, it's been going up, and it's up to now somewhere between 700 and 800 per day in the hospital. And, and the issue here is going to be, again, that we're going to run out of space in the ICUs, we're going to run out of space in the hospitals. Vaccines are not going to be here anytime before the change of the calendar year. Even when a vaccine gets here, depending on who's funding the company that creates the vaccine, how big that company is, and what the availability of that vaccine is going to be, and what type of vaccine it's going to be, we're not going to all instantaneously have access to a vaccine, and a vaccine's probably, a vaccine can be anywhere from 30% to 50% like the flu, to 95% plus effective. Regardless, we are going to be living with this for a while. So what we're trying to do is keep the public safe and keep the public, keep the hospitals functioning at a capacity for the next several months to perhaps measured in years, where we can safely care for patients, and patients will not be denied hospital care. That's really all I have to say, and I thank you very much for your time.
And counsel? Thank you so much.
That is all the physicians. Do you want me to continue with the people pro and against the ordinance?
Yes.
Or the people that signed up to speak ahead of time?
Yes. And after they speak, I would like for the council, then the administration, to speak on it.
Okay. James Jackson?
This is for or against?
He's in favor.
In favor.
Mr. James Jackson?
He might be outside. James Jackson?
Yes.
We'll just go to the next one, just come back to him.
Okay. I think she's going to be outside also. She's against, Susan Murphy.
Mr. Chair, if I could, before we hear the next speaker, I'd just like to, everybody's made some comments or asked some questions. I've tried to reserve that until this point, when all the doctors have had a chance to speak, and as Ms. Rich talks, there was some eloquent speech, there's no question about that. There was a lot said about masks working, and I'll make it very clear, I believe masks work. The proper mask, worn properly, proper practice, and we all know what those are, because we've been told over and over and over how to handle a mask, where to put the mask, what not to do with masks, so it's all there. What we also know is that there's a varying degree of opinion on how far the virus travels, depending on how loud we speak, or how far our voice is projected when we sing. I'm not going to argue with that. I think it varies, and I think that's a physics question and maybe not a medical decision. It was mentioned that I was, I was laughing, I was smiling, I was entertained, because, Doc, I mean, you know it, you know all these facts, and I, and I believe you. But it's when you go outside, the medical opinion, it, it sometimes entertains me, because we have that when it comes up. So it wasn't a personal thing, and certainly not a disrespect to your medical opinion. We also know, based on what we've heard, that the virus is suspended for a certain amount of time, and that's really unknown. It was first thought, when we taped all this off, that between meetings, that we wouldn't have this exchange of people coming in and out and sitting in the same seats over and over, that people would come in and they would take their seats, and they would remain still and remain in social spacing, and then this whole room would be disinfected. I don't know if that's really happening or not, but, but that was one of the thoughts. And a couple of the doctors mentioned, and I agree, that if you run someone through the same space over and over again for screening, maybe blood pressure or any other pre-procedure, that there's a real chance that there is going to be a spread of that virus. We also talked about, and I absolutely believe, there's a difference in opinion on different surfaces and different times, but the virus can exist and can be spread by people who touch surfaces and then touch other surfaces. I walked away from the egg aisle in Publix, and I like Publix very much. They make you wear the masks when you come in, and that's why I go there. But there was a lady before me that touched every single egg carton. Hold on. Hold on, because what we're hearing is arbitrary opinions. Very smart folks with great intentions, with pure intentions, giving arbitrary and what they believe to be true facts. Look, guys, I'm not against masks. I'm simply against our government saying, "You got to wear a mask. You have to wear a mask in a parking lot." And I don't own the parking lot, neither does any other taxpayer. I'm against telling private citizens to do certain things when a health officer of Mobile County has the absolute authority to make it true for the whole county, but says, "We're just going to test it out right here." Because those guys out in the county, not, not that big a deal right now. We have a mayor who I've voted for, I think I voted for him three or four times last time, and I vote for him three or four times again, but has the authority to tell everyone in this room that you got to put a mask on or you can't come in. But yet, we're not doing that. We could do it at parks, but we're actually excluding parks in this ordinance. We're excluding a park that's owned by the taxpayers, but we're including a parking lot that's not. Again, I'm not against masks, I wear them. I wash my hands countless times. I do the business end of a dental practice every day, and we wear full shield, M95 masks, just like Doc told us, surgical masks. M95 masks, just like Doc told us. Surgical masks over that. With gown. Washing our clothes at the office, not going home. Disinfecting all surfaces every single time. I'm not saying it's not dangerous. I'm just saying that as a government, we can't control this. And let me give you a great example of two things I witnessed today. I personally witnessed, and each of you, had you also paid very close attention, would have seen that each speaker, with one exception, took their mask off in that common space inside the 15 minutes, placed their mask on the podium, each one of them, in the same place, and returned those masks to their faces. I'm no doctor. I wanna make that very clear. I don't know if there was any exchange of, of coronavirus, but I think we'd all agree that there was a possibility. I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to be controversial. I'm trying to be real. Each one of them, with one exception, touched the podium. So if it's true that it lives on a surface, if it's true that it can be spread by, uh, one touching a surface and another touching a surface, and another touching their mouth or getting close proximity in a same space over a certain amount of time, is the law on masks gonna change things? Only personal responsibility is gonna change. And the other witness that I made today, it was actually two incidences. And I don't mean to call them out, and I won't call them out by name. But there were two doctors within three feet of each other, within three feet of each other. Might have been closer than that, they were kinda whispering, so they were pretty close to each other. Exchanging information right there in the aisle by the, during this meeting, right there, after all this talk. No mask, either one of them. And they're both high authority now. We also had two of my colleagues, the same thing. These are all the very people that absolutely know that a mask works. But multiple violations in this chamber when we're talking about it. So can we pretend that a mask passed by seven council members, well, excuse me, six council members, is gonna make a difference? I'm just a realist, folks. I never made rules for my kids that I didn't think I could enforce. In 20 years in the Army, I never established a policy or made a rule that I couldn't enforce. And I just, based on what I've seen today, don't believe that we can enforce this. We have a very serious situation on our hands. It's not a time to be mean to each other, but it is time to be true and real. Those with authority, if they believe it should be, should not place it on another body. They've got the authority to make those decisions. We need to individually take responsibility. Because I don't think we're gonna have mandatory and enforceable, we're not gonna have an ordinance on spacing. We're not gonna have an ordinance on hand washing. There's two of our tools we've just disrespected under the same standard of measurement that was laid out to us. But this is serious business. I wash my hands, I wash those surfaces, I wear my mask when I cannot predict if I'm gonna be within six feet of somebody or share a space in a very quick amount of time. That's what we all need to be doing. And I apologize for taking all that time. I normally don't do that, and I thank you for listening.
Mr. James Jackson?
Good morning, everyone. James Jackson, 224 Garrison Avenue, Pritchett, Alabama. I'm here, um, with concerns and questions. I'm an entrepreneur. Uh, I'm also a, a advocate for the community, and I'm also a concerned citizen. I'm very glad that y'all are coming up with this mask ordinance, because a couple of weekends ago, I was in the entertainment district, and I can count on one hand how many people had a mask, and I immediately went back to my car and went back home. Just have, I just have, um, some questions and concerns for vulnerable citizens like, uh, homeless, were they considered, were they considered in the audience, and, uh, people that's going through economic hardship. Uh, I just wanted to know whether they're considered, uh, in the audience. That's, that's it.
Yes, sir. Chris, can you aspire on that a little bit more? Mr. Arches.
And also, and also in New Orleans, they're not finding people for not having masks. They're asking the police are giving people masks to di, uh, consider as an option as well.
As far as the, um, it doesn't have to be any special kind of mask, just some sort of face covering. There's nothing particular about homeless folks or anything like that.
Like, they may not have access to a mask, or?
It can be any kind of cloth covering.
Okay.
And, uh, there's some exceptions for vulnerable people. If they, uh, are unable to wear a mask, they can't, they're not able to breathe, or they have chronic lung disease, anything that would interfere with that. There's exceptions for small children. But as far as the, it doesn't have to be a store-bought or specially-made mask. It can be a bandana or any kind of cloth.
Okay. Thank you for the information. That's all. Thank you.
And thank you. I think that's Mrs. Susan Murphy. Yeah, you can just stay.
Honorable Mayor, esteemed city council members, and other esteemed guests, thank you for your attention today as we bring our concerns to this board.
Ms. Murphy, can you give us your address?
8552 Lockwood Place.
Thank you.
As a citizen of Mobile, I ask that you not mandate the wearing of masks in public places around the city. We have to keep in mind that nationwide, the recovery, recovery rate of the COVID virus is upward of 99%. During the height of the pandemic in New York, the public became aware that the virus is much more widespread than we knew, potentially dangerous for the elderly and immunocompromised, but relatively benign in most other people. In a March 26th editorial in the New England Journal of Medicine, CDC's Dr. Anthony Fauci wrote, "The case fatality rate may be considerably less than 1%." "This suggests that the overall clinical consequences of COVID-19 may be more akin to those of a severe seasonal influenza." He was right on that one point. A May 21st article in the New England Journal of Medicine, authors Klompis, Morris, Sinclair, Pearson, includes a statement that is very telling, in my estimation. "We know that wearing a mask outside healthcare facilities offers little, if any, protection from infection." Public health authorities define significant exposure to COVID-19 as face-to-face contact within six feet that is sustained for at least a few minutes. And I think I heard earlier someone said up to 15 minutes. "The chance of catching COVID-19 from a passing interaction in a public space is therefore minimal." "In many cases, the desire for widespread masking is a reflexive, reflexive reaction to anxiety over the pandemic," end quote. In the same article, the authors say, quote, "It is also clear that masks serve symbolic roles. Masks are not only tools, they are tal, also talismans that may help increase healthcare workers' perceived sense of safety, well-being, and trust in their hospitals." "One might argue that fear and anxiety are better countered with data and education than with a margin, marginally beneficial mask, but it is difficult to get clinicians to hear this message in the heat of the current crisis." Now, are they advocating practicing shamanism or medicine? Throughout the last four months, testing and numbers of the infected and how they became infected have been suspect. The number of people dying from pneumonia was nearly nonexistent. People died instead of COVID. COVID cases garnered more money for hospitals, and if patients were put on ventilators, the monetary benefit to the hospital was even greater. Reports came of doctors and e, even funeral home directors being pressured to list cause of death as COVID, even if the patient had been hospitalized for some other more serious ailment. The duplicity is staggering. On June 20th, The Washington Post reported the results of a federal review of contaminated virus test kits that the CDC sent out from their headquarters in January. That article says, quote, "Lab practices may have been insufficient to present, prevent the risk of contamination," end quote. "The kits generated false positive results of 24 of the first..."
Ms. Murphy?
Yes, sir.
And that's your five minutes.
I, I just have a few more, please.
That's your five minutes, Ms. Murphy, and...
Sir, please give me a chance to finish.
Ms. Murphy, that's your five minutes. And just to clarify one thing, funeral directors do not list cause of deaths on the death certificate. That, that information is incorrect. And the question's from the council.
You know, I was able to, I was not able to come down there with the rest of you. Let me speak.
Ms. Murphy?
Let me speak.
Ms. Murphy?
I am a citizen of the Mobile.
Ms. Murphy?
I am a citizen.
Ms. Murphy?
And you let all these others speak. Allow me to speak, sir.
Ms. Murphy?
Allow me to speak.
We will actually leave the chamber with the, Councilman Davis.
Mayor, may I speak?
Ms. Murphy, please. Councilman Davis.
You're not letting the citizens have their say.
Ms. Murphy had your five minutes.
And that's what's wrong here.
Ms. Murphy? One more response, we're gonna ask you to leave this meeting. Mr. Davis.
The fact of the matter is that the COVID, this crisis has been a big, fat, money loser for the hospitals. They had to go 60 days without doing any elective procedures. They had to leave a lot of beds open in the hospitals. So the idea, the idea that they have, that the hospitals and the people that fill the hospitals have done it for their own good is wrong. Thank you, Mr. President.
And other council members?
No, I, I would suggest if you wanna leave your speech, since you didn't finish it, but we are so steadfast with the five minutes, and I don't think anyone had additional time. So if you wanna leave your speech, we can get copies of it and read what you'd like us to know.
Okay. I, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Move on, ladies. And the other council members? Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
Felida Keen?
Ms. Keen, if she's out in the, in the atrium? Ms. Keen?
Is someone checking?
I think Courtney went to check. CJ? CJ, you may want to repeat the five-minute thing. You may want to just remind everybody about the five minutes and that the buzzer will sound.
And just remember to all the speakers, everyone is given five minutes, uh, four minutes, the bell will ring signifying that you have one more minute to summarize your speech, and when the second, uh, bell ring, that is, that's it. Okay? Thank you. Ms. Keen?
Good morning.
Good morning. You can give us your address.
Uh, my name is Lita Keen, and it's 8831 Winford Way. Okay. I'm a little nervous, so hang tight. This week marks the 244th year of our freedom as a nation. A few years back, I walked the Trail of Freedom in Boston. There was one particular spot that memorialized five men who lost their lives fighting for my freedom. That was the beginning of the Boston Massacre. That day, I started crying, and as you can see, I may do that today. I have not forgotten that moment. I had been to Cuba more than once and walked the streets of both San Cristobal and our sister city Havana. They keep the city of Havana looking good for the tourists, but the town outside of Havana tell the real story. I spent most of my time with the citizens of San Cristobal. The streets were heartbreaking. The stores displayed rows of alcohol, but the shelves are without food and basic needs. One lady cried on my shoulder, saying her husband left her 15 years ago on a boat for the USA, and she never heard from him again. He and many others want the freedom we have, that they would rather die than live in a soci, a socialist society. I came back to the USA vowing never to take my freedom for granted or the ability to buy the food in the best of the stores every day. After these experiences, I do not take the privilege of dressing, addressing my local government lightly. So I'm humbly asking you to listen to my concerns about wearing masks. And there's really no need for me to refute all of the information given by the medical society. That's not why I'm here. I just wanna share that I have four grandchildren, and not one person has spoken about young children wearing masks in this room, and what it does to them emotionally to have to wear a mask. And, excuse me, when I say one of our gentlemen said, "That's all we got." There's no scientific proof that this is gonna stop the disease, and this is all we've got. And that's what you want my grandchildren to wear a mask for? That, to me, that brings chills. That you would even suggest that. My husband is 67 with a pacemaker, so I understand high risk. However, we both understand it is our responsibility to take care of ourselves. It is not yours. Now, I would like to say, and I have this information, if you would like it, uh, to hand out, that on the WHO, nobody has mentioned the WHO information, and they don't recommend. If you look on their site, and it says, "For people who need to give guidance to the general public, this is what you look for." None of you have mentioned that these things, it says the potential advantages listed are four. Potential stigmatization for those who wear masks, people feeling that they can play a role in contributing to stopping the virus or the spread. That is all I've heard this morning. People's feelings. I am not willing to have my constitutional rights taken for people's feelings. What about my feeling? We are individuals in this nation. I have just as much right and to say, I have quit stopping in stores that have made me wear a mask. I'm not doing that. The other one is, it may promote individual, uh, what's that word, individual camaraderie, because you wear masks that you can associate with. And you can make an income making cloth masks. No one here has addressed the fact that cloth masks, as you breathe, or let's just say everyday bandanas, you are breathing your microorganisms into that. The WHO says they must be washed, and if not, it will self-contaminate you. Here's the other thing. There are 18 potential harms. How mu, how long do I have?
One minute.
Okay. There are 18 potential harms, which are things that are self-contamination, okay? It also says that it gives a false sense of security. That is what everyone I have heard speak in here, of a false sense of security. False sense. And it also says that it causes people not to wear, not to adhere to the other mandates. So here's where I wanna go. And I appreciate the gentleman who asked about the cost for the, uh, families. Prohibited. One store at, at, um, Home Depot, you have to change the mask every four months. So this is what I wanna say. Oh, I also wanna say, one, one doctor here was worried about lawsuits. I'm not worried about lawsuits. In conclusion, taking away my freedom that others fault and die for should not include wearing a mask for 0.007% of the population of Mobile County. Nobody's telling that piece of information. There are far more disadvantages, 18, as compared to four, and you can go to the WHO website and look for yourself. The advantages of wearing a mask are based on nothing more than a feel-good solution, and also to say, I should not be asked to give up my... And also, I should not be asked to give up my freedom for somebody else's. Thank you. I pray for you.
Thank you.
Ms. Merchant?
Good morning, good evening. Velma Dell Jackson, 1552 J Drive, Mobile, Alabama, 36605. With all due respect to our doctors, I speak from a higher power. I want to talk about the face mask today. The one thing about all others that make us a human being, the one thing above all other things that make us a human being is our mouth. With it, we speak and communicate. We smile, we frown. When we cover our mouth, we are covering our humanity. This is what the enemy wants to accomplish. We need not to be afraid of death. Jesus conquered death on the cross. There is no death. We simply pass from this world to the next, heaven or hell. Only thing we should be afraid of is hell, and no one needs to go to hell. We are losing our freedom. It is better to die with freedom than to live without freedom. Open your city while you still can and never close it again. Let people have their own decision about wearing a mask or about where they go. This is not about black and white. This is not about all our freedom. This is about all our freedom. If we lose, we all lose. Don't take the bait. Don't fall in the trap. We are seeing evils attempt to take over the world, but God has the final word. To save the city, the city must pray. Every Wednesday, 12 noon, Government Plaza. Anyone who calls themselves a pastor who hear my voice today, God says to be there tomorrow. If I have the right over my body to have an abortion, should I have the right whether to wear a mask or not? If you pass this audience, you must end abortion in this city. Life is life, thus says the Lord. Amen.
All right, thank you, Ms. Jackson. Ms. Merchant? That's dealing with the-
No, this is the, people have signed in.
Okay. I'm just going to just pause for a minute, and before we go to the other items, we probably just take a break as a council, but just to deal with this ordinance in front of us right now, I believe that we're going to not vote on this today because I have one of the council members probably going to hold it up. But do we have any comments from the council then? If the mayor is still present, we're going to try to get comments from him.
Yeah.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes, I would just like to say, it has been made clear to us that the doctors that's fighting this virus for us have four twos to work with. And either if, without, if we allow, or if any of these twos are compromised, it would give deference to the coronavirus to spread faster. And they said it's early prevention, wearing a mask, social distancing, and washing your hands. These, there's no vaccine, there's no, all they can do when you get to the hospital is try and make you comfortable, put you on a ventilator. These are the things we can do not to go to the hospital. And the notion that the government has no authority to tell citizens what to do, I don't know what planet you own. The only, the first and foremost purpose for any government is to protect its citizens. If you can't do that, you need to disband. Man started out in a state of nature without a government. You know how we got a government? Because the powerful overran the weak. They waited until they planted their crops and got all of their cattle and hogs and all in order, and they came down out of, off the mountain, they took everything they You know what the weak did? They organized a government. They empowered a sheriff, they empowered a marshal, so when they come down off that mountain, you would go to jail. That's how we got a government. If you don't think, if you think you have the right to do whatever you want to do, don't buy no tag on your car, don't get no driver's license, leave your lights off at night. Don't cut no lights on, you got streetlights, but they say that for hours, and see how far down the road you will get. And try explaining to the police officer that I have rights not to cut my lights on and see what happened to you. You know when your rights ends, when another person's rights begin? You don't have no rights that will permit you to harm anybody. That's why they want your lights on so folks know you're coming and they're going to run into you. Speed limits out there. Go down, go down Dolphin Street during 60 miles per hour and see what happens. You're free, you have your rights. Your rights end when another person's rights begin. I just want to make that clear, that government does have the authority to dictate what's going to happen to our citizens and keep them safe. We have that authority. We have done it before, and it's before us now. I'm voting for it. Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. I can be very brief. I want to again thank all of the medical professionals, Dr. Ischold, and the chief of the medical, the president of the Medical Society of Mobile, and the chief medical officers and presidents of various hospitals. We have, we've heard from all of them, from the chief medical officer, from the gentleman representing the Medical Society of Mobile, from the chief medical officers of the hospitals, and they all have a uniform message. We need to adopt the ordinance.
Yes.
I'm not going to substitute my judgment for theirs. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Rich?
Thank you very much. And I too like to thank everybody from the pro side of the argument and even people who are opposed, which is really the true nature of America when we debate an issue that's going to perhaps become a law to be regulated by the government that kind of uplifts your quality of life, we're hoping at all times. The other thing is, is that with this pandemic, everyone is going by, almost by the seat of their pants as they learn each day how to create ways in order to combat it. And I know when the full shutdown was in place and elective surgeries were put on hold, that had a negative effect on our community, and I know that the medical community wants very much to avoid that from happening. We talked about running out of ventilators and whatnot. We didn't really concentrate on the incident of someone waiting too long to come in or missing their elective surgery date because it was canceled. So we all have to be in this boat together. This is not a political ideal that's being exposed to us. It's a health issue. And I know that people will want to rail against something that they feel is taking their rights away, but that's very clear. When your rights afflict a negative impact on someone, then government can intervene to try to regulate. And we're talking about something temporary is certainly our hope, and it's not to muzzle free speech. We're doing everything we can. We have made adjustments. So I just, I just really would like to see this happen sooner than later for this community because, again, my feelings, and of course, I'm very close to the medical community, I'm married to one from the medical community, and their interest is your best interest. I can tell you, I know for a fact that's true, and it's not a political agenda. It's a way to manage our healthcare, and I am all for it, and I'd like to see this in place. I will leave it to the mayor on how it can be enforced. I think it's a good idea that our police, perhaps, if they're the ones to go up to an individual, perhaps could be armed with masks to give them out. I don't have a problem with that. And again, this is so sensitive nationwide in general, there's so many things happen. But just put this in your healthcare bucket, okay? And look at how we can do something as a community to step forward and make a difference. Thank you.
Well, the reason I wanted us to have this conversation is that I think it's very important that the public hear that, and I know that the public doesn't always watch proceedings, but hopefully some excerpts from what has been expressed here, you know, will resonate to all of our citizens. And so as we go forward with this path, and you know, once a vote has been taken, then we'll discuss, you know, how do we go forward from here? I don't know that I've necessarily learned anything new, but what we did know, and the reason that last week that we decided to put this on the agenda is because of the rapid increase in cases. And just to sit by and do nothing, to sit by and not even have a conversation about it would be the wrong thing to do. And so for those who don't want to wear masks, I think that it's been expressed, the understanding of why people don't want to wear masks, but it's also been expressed very eloquently why it would help us all. So we'll take the next step after the city council, you know, makes their decision on how we go forward.
Ms. Gregory?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vice President. Just a few things, we have been discussing, and also a lot of the emails that we have gotten had some questions about exactly, you know, how young children or those with mental challenges can wear masks and do it safely. We've, some of us have discussed, should we raise the age limit? I think it's two years old or something. Maybe we should look at making the age older, because it is going to be very difficult for these children to wear masks. Anybody that has toddlers certainly know that. Also, the enforcement issue has come up. How do we enforce? Do we enforce? The Public Safety Director mentioned, just like in New Orleans, maybe police should be armed with masks instead of ticket books to give to people who are not wearing masks. Is that how we enforce it or not? I also have a question about how do businesses handle this? I know retailers, a lot of times, will have a sign that says, "No shirt, no shoes, no service." Do they have a sign that says, "No mask, no entry"? We've seen countless videos of people going into stores where a customer doesn't want to wear a mask if it is required by the store, and a lot of times, an incident erupts between the customer and the store employees. I mean, how do people handle these types of things? I know that the mayor said, "As we go forward," but if we pass this, when does it become law, and how then do we enforce? I think we need to know what these answers are, because people will have all these questions, and we need to have the answers before we approve something that we don't know exactly how to handle. Within the ordinance, it talks about sidewalks. There are some exceptions in there, as long as you can social distance if you're outside, you know, doing sporting activities, those kinds of things. We just need to clarify that to make sure that people understand if you're, for example, walking downtown for lunch, those sidewalks are generally pretty busy and pretty packed. But if you're walking on sidewalks, for instance, in my district on Old Shell Road, and there's nobody out there, you don't wear a mask. But we need to clarify those things because those questions, I think, will come up. So those were my thoughts on this. Whether this goes forward today, I don't know. I would tend to agree maybe with Dr. Ischold. We could try it for 30 days, see if that brings the numbers down. And if we do make it limited time, have a deadline, I think that would give some people at least a better sense of knowing that it's not forever. But I don't know that we're voting on this today anyway, so a lot of this is just talk for now. And if we do come back and vote on it, I would like to see some answers to my questions so that we know how to better tell our constituents what exactly this ordinance does and what it means.
Mr. Williams?
Thank you very much. Just want to let everyone know that there has been a press release that this will be taken up again tomorrow. It is, in my opinion, but also contrary opinion by our legal counsel, that this is not in accordance with the city code. I'm not talking about rules or anything, but Section 2-58, Order of Business, and it is under paragraph one, sub-paragraph three, that says that anything that doesn't receive unanimous consent, and that is one person, that this, that each of those issues or any issue that doesn't receive unanimous consent will be brought to the agenda on the next regular meeting. And it says it twice in the same paragraph. It wasn't by accident. And what I'm being told by the council, and I'm not speaking out of turn, I don't think, or being unfair, is that the council can do whatever it wants, whenever it wants, so long as five people agree. So we're right now talking about a law that we're going to make people do stuff, but yeah, we're going to, nah, right, our law's not that big a deal. It's just Section 2-58 that says you, you hear it on the next regularly scheduled meeting, in other words, a week. You might be asking yourself, why is John Williams getting all crazy about this rule thing? Well, it's a rule because many people have thought that it's, it was the right thing to do. Many people believe that time allows people to know things, and it allows for the appropriate action. And unanimous consent, in this case, is going to be waived. The law is going to be waived because the council believes it's a good idea. Where do they, where do we stop that? We're going to spend a million dollars. This used to happen five years ago before Ms. Gregory was the president of the council. We never withheld unanimous consent on anything unless we were fighting with somebody. We didn't do it for the intent, and that is to make sure that we had appropriately addressed the issue. In this case, there's still a lot of questions out there. But yet tomorrow, we're going to address this. And would it be okay if we were going to spend $2 million on something you disagreed with? Because the precedent is set. All it takes is five people to say, you know what? We're going to have a special meeting tomorrow. It's almost like a secret meeting, so to speak. We're going to rush this thing through so you can't say anything about it, and we don't have to get your emails. I think it's a bad precedent. I'm a little disappointed in the whole process. The opinion I disagree with, the action of the council to call a special meeting, I disagree with. Quite frankly, I just think the whole thing could have been handled differently. And that's just being fair. Again, as everyone has said, thanks to everybody for coming here. I learned a great deal by listening. I always do. But because I have a different opinion on government, it really doesn't make me a bad person, doesn't make me wrong, doesn't make you right. And again, it is a process. This time, I'm going to be disappointed if we meet tomorrow contrary to the city code. When, in fact, the authority without this council, rest on the gentleman at the door, Dr. Ischold, have a great deal of respect for, been in the job a long time, friend of my wife's family, very personal, and the mayor who could be doing these things as well, now, doing them now. We canceled the 4th of July. Now, doing them now. We canceled the 4th of July. We canceled it in the city. And the mayor has the authority to say no to any public land, that is, all our parks, everything that is a city of mobile property. And Dr. Ischold can make that countywide, but chose not to. We're going to put it on the council, and we're going to run it by tomorrow. Ah, I hate that. I really do. Just the way it goes. But I'll see y'all tomorrow.
I have a comment.
Yes, Ms. Rich.
Thank you very much. I like the fact that there is a non-debatable unanimous consent option to remove something from the agenda. I don't disagree with that ability of any council person. I do beg to differ that we have gone and colored outside of the lines. Because I was out of town when a special call meeting, and it was for the budget, if you recall, last year. And there was an opinion from our current city council attorney that that could not happen because of exactly as you mentioned. You take something off an agenda as an agenda item, and it reads the following week. And we've been pretty good about adhering to that. But on that very important issue, that seemed to be an okay thing to do. And I guess because I'm close to the health and well-being of people, being through osmosis, through marriage, I think it's okay that we meet and discuss this. So again, it is an option of the council. But I do think that five of us probably need to agree that we're going to meet as a council. That's something I don't disagree with on that avenue. But we can do that, and we can give the 24-hour notice. It's really the notice of telling people what the topic is and what we're going to discuss. And this has been greatly discussed, and yes, we'll probably still hear from people. We'll probably hear from people pro and con for days to come. Since if we do a 30-day option with this, people will be weighing in, as they should. But I just know that we've done this before with an opinion that it was okay, and it was accepted. And so I missed out on the budget, and I was not happy about that at the time. But I've gotten over it, and I still have representation to bring to the table regardless of that issue. Just like any council person, when you don't get your option either through a consensus dealt with, or if you lose whatever that position you had, you move on. So that's how we roll. Thanks.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Richardson.
I'd just like to say that if we, if unanimous consent was held today, and a meeting was called tomorrow on the same ordinance, we would not be sitting a president. When it came before the council to drop the lawsuit that was against us, I withheld unanimous consent. Meaning it should lay all until the next regular council meeting. Same thing you're saying that our attorney is saying. A rushed meeting was called in the middle of the week. On that same ordinance that I withheld unanimous consent on, and not one council member said that I was right. Not one. It was voted on against my objections. I cited the law. I cited the rules, and you ran over me like a freight train. So let's rock and roll.
Everybody is entitled to their own opinions. And everybody do have their own opinions. But this here is an emergency matter. Even dealing with the budget and the lawsuit, to me, this still is an emergency matter, you know? Earlier on, you know, our letter official, top officials, had stated that this is more like a hurricane coming to Mobile, but a hurricane is here. And just not to act upon anything is, to me, is not a good leadership in my role. It's absolutely clear that the coronavirus remains very active in our community. And more needs to be done to slow this process and the spread of this deadly disease that's overwhelming our hospitals and really having people to, you know, be at home while their loved ones in the hospital, and they can't go and visit their loved one because of, you know, of coronavirus. And we are not in our second wave. We still currently is in our first wave. And, you know, the biggest, you know, what we're facing now is the super-spreaders. As we heard from the many doctors, that the younger generation are our super-spreaders. And with those younger generation going home and visiting grandmama and great-grandmama, great-granddaddy and granddaddy is very detrimental in our communities. Where the younger people are now going home and spreading this stuff to the older generation and causing them hardship as far as even going to visit funeral homes and undertakers and et cetera. Counsel, this is really an urgent matter that is affecting our citizens. And with the doctor saying that with all the percentage, the numbers of confirmed cases in Mobile County, that the city is, have 70 to 75% of those cases within the city limits, that is very dangerous. Very dangerous. And even here, one of the officials saying that in Texas, there are younger people are not in the hospital dealing with this virus. And with the supervision of our attorney, you know, suggesting that we can go ahead and have a special call meeting tomorrow, to me, is an emergency meeting because this is affecting our community at 2:00 PM. If our rights, or we're within our rights to have it, I believe that we should go ahead and call a special meeting for tomorrow at 2:00 PM. And any questions that the council do have, you know, concerns, I think that we should send it to both of the city attorney and to our council attorney. And even to throw in the 30-days mandate of, you know, for this ordinance to last. But I'd like to hear from our attorney and then go from there, you know, as far as having a meeting on tomorrow at 2:00 PM.
It is true that council has a rule that if matters of unanimous consent for media considerations withheld, the rule states shall be held over the next regular meeting. There's also a rule thereafter in the code, which is 2-67, which states that no ordinance duly adopted or taken by the council shall be invalid by the failure of the council to abide by these same rules. So in other words, which is the same exact thing that happened with the lawsuit back in, whenever that was, November, December. And so calling the meeting itself does not violate any rule. The president can call a special meeting when he believes this business of the city requires it. A meeting can be called on the request, written request of three counselors. It can be called on the written request of the mayor. So the calling of the meeting is not a rule violation. What happens in the meeting, if it doesn't follow the rule that the first rule I stated, if you get five votes, the bottom line is the supermajority is going to control. The rules are waived all the time for all sorts of reasons. Large reasons and small reasons. So I think it can happen, and I think it will be a valid ordinance if it does in fact get five votes.
So you're suggesting as far as in, one of the council members just go ahead and just call a meeting and just have to concord, and that'd be okay without an official vote? Or five?
Yeah, I don't think you need to vote to have the meeting. I think the call has already gone out. You got to have 24 hours' notice. Got to post the notice according to the Open Meetings Act. Got to send notices to the council and the mayor and me and Mr. Woods. All that is going on, I believe, within the 24 hours if it's supposed to be at 2:00. So it's your council and your rules. And I think if you get the votes, that'll do. But you don't have to vote to call a meeting in that case.
No.
Okay, so I mean, I'm in for calling the meeting tomorrow at 2:00 PM? Two of the council members in agreement?
I'm in.
Will five show up, in other words? You have to have a quorum.
Did you say that the council president himself can call the meeting?
That is what the rule states, yes, sir.
So he, so we, he doesn't need two others. He can call it by himself.
He's already done.
And he's already done that, so.
Right, but will five show up, I guess we...
Yes, sir. That's Section 250, 2-53. The president of the council shall call special meetings of the council whenever, in his opinion, the president, the public business may require it.
Just, Mr. Dase? So council, if you have any additional comments, I ask you all to email it to the mayor, excuse me, the city attorney and also our council attorney. We're going to jump for just a five-minute break, and...
Can we have a little bit more than five minutes?
What, 15?
No!
10? Council, 10 minutes?
15, 11 minutes.
Counsel, let's just take a 10-minute break.
Yeah.
And we'll come back in 10 minutes.
Paul?
It's the second week in a row I'm going to miss lunch.
Do y'all have any sanitizer down there for them? Sanitizer?
Cool, you can go to rest. Salad, stuff?
It's all, it's all held over tomorrow.
That all holds, holds again.
Holds again.
We don't hold that. You didn't give me a first time, did you? You didn't, I said, John, you said it right there. We got the whole, the whole again.
For media conference call, I, I think it would be helpful to have someone frame it because also the.
We can't hold up public hearings, so that's only thing that it would have to let.
We already had this.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
It's a profit, non-failing.
Probably won't do that anyway. Tell her, yeah, well, you can't.
What's that?
It's a big, that name. So, you gonna hear all that stuff tomorrow? No, 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 it's not, not about that stuff that, that, that is a quick call. You have to be sincere, you gonna hear all that? Huh? Are you on? It doesn't have to have purpose on these, it's another thing now, right? To, to listen to all things.
Well, I couldn't agree.
Not hurt. We're, we're married. So, can you see what I'm talking about?
I would wish it were.
Yeah, it is.
So, the, uh, now, uh.
It's a day time.
It's a, I read.
Right.
So, Joe, I'm saying he don't. Yeah, he, I'm right now. I'm wild about, um, when Gina, uh, just didn't agree.
It is, uh.
Uh, that was it.
But this is a death. So, you can do this on a one-hand, you can do this on a shift.
Uh, counsel, we're gonna start in about two minutes, two minutes. Countdown, man, clerk. Counsel, we'll start in one minute. Go ahead and start, I'll meet you back up.
Antonio Moore.
Mr. Moore, you go ahead.
All right, my name is Antonio Moore. Six, my address is six zero seven two Highland Circle North, three six six zero eight. Ms. Rich is my councilwoman. And I want to address the council on a situation that happened last Tuesday. On June twenty-third, two thousand twenty, I was granted a Norris ordinance waiver by this city council for an event I had planned that very day. Under the advice from a member of this council, I also obtained a public assembly permit for that same event. I did all of these things in an attempt to gather with others and not be bothered by the police. Well, that didn't happen because minutes after we gathered, the drama with MPD started. From an arrest dealing with sidewalk chalk, the refusal to read documents or talk to us, the presence of SWAT, and if I'm apt to believe the black SUVs are them, and the threatening presence of the department as well as the appearance of a paddy wagon, last Tuesday did not go as according to plan, and it seemed like a traumatic attempt to scare us away. And the only thing I can conclude is that Mobile Police Department is not as fond of peaceful protests as they claim. I am very disappointed with how the police force handled themselves, and the aftermath wasn't any better. The next day, I went to file a complaint at the central precinct due to my interactions with Lieutenant Sean Fisher, which is shown in the video I sent the city clerk, council clerk yesterday, and I hope the city, let me get this correct, and I hope the council can review that video as well. The first officer, a sergeant, I spoke to also tried to tell me I didn't have a complaint for real, and that he didn't see a problem, and tried to dissuade me, but I persisted and filed a complaint anyways once Captain Cunningham arrived. Is this a pattern in where citizens file complaints against officers and the supervisors talk the citizens out of it stating they don't have a complaint? Why didn't this sergeant also file an official complaint as well? I spoke with Internal Affairs and they said a lot of the times, the precincts will not do an official complaint and just try to handle it in-house, but that doesn't leave a paper trail. How many times has this happened, I wonder? That being said, the next day, on an interview with NBC fifteen, the chief police stated in the interview that we did not have permission to draw on any surface, whether it be sidewalk or the monument base. By the way, when told to stop drawing on the monument base, everyone indeed stopped and started drawing on the sidewalk like we were instructed to do. And I have video and pictures to prove no one drew on the statue after the warning and the arrest was an illegal arrest. Those pictures are in the email I sent the clerk as well. But with that state, well, this statement from the interview the chief had, he also stated that the group who drew the prior Black Lives Matter mural on the road a few weeks ago had permission to do that. But when I contacted that group and the person in the mayor's office who also helped organize it, they said they only needed permission to close the road and got nothing to say they needed permission to use chalk on the roadways. So my question is this. Is sidewalk chalk illegal in the city under an ordinance? I searched the Mobile ordinance codes, and sidewalk chalk does not seem to qualify as a graffiti implement. I also searched the Alabama criminal code, and since rain washes away chalk, it causes no damage to anything it is written on, so it can't be a charge of criminal mischief. So one question I have, if the council can answer this, and that is West City's opinion on sidewalk chalk. Can citizens freely use it on sidewalks without recourse? I mean, will police, if they saw our kids or grandkids playing with chalk on the sidewalk, attempt to charge them or the parents with the crime? If the answer is indeed that it is illegal, then how does one go about getting permission to do sidewalk art? As for my matter with the police, I did speak with Director Barber, and he stated that, and we had a discussion outside. And I was just wanting to let the city council be aware of that discussion. And I will thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I will greatly appreciate it.
Anything from the council before I turn it over to the, uh, council attorney, I mean, the city attorney? Okay. The city, Mr. Woods?
So, Mr. Chairman, did you have a specific question?
Yes, Mr. Moore had indicated that he wanted to know about the ordinance with using chalk and this, et cetera, and in the rules and.
So defacing public property with any kind of permanency, there is a law against that, but specifically the sidewalk chalk, it's not applicable. And so in this particular instance, and I'll limit it to this particular instance, um, you did have a magistrate that said, I'm not going to swear out that warrant, and so those charges were not pressed and the person was released. So we're not, there, there's no, there's no disagreement here, I think. Um, you, you, you don't have a pending charge of criminal mischief for two reasons. One, there's no permanency, and two, there's no, there's no damage, so there's nothing to recover. As for the broader point of sidewalk chalk, you can use it on public property as long as it can be washed away, but you cannot use it on private property, you can't block the sidewalks. I would suggest that people get permission to do so to avoid any confusion, but for this particular incident, it is, it's, um, there's no charge.
Director, you.
Okay, I think that was.
What, Ms., Ms. Moore?
Basic, I think that was basically.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just gonna comment as a follow-up to, to Ricardo, the, you know, freedom of expression is certainly, and, and that's one way to express without permanent damage to any of the public facilities or, or public property. And so sidewalk chalk in itself, we didn't see as being a damaging thing. There was no public works called out to have to clean it, it was washed off by the rain. And so I think the concerns raised by Mr. Moore and, uh, his friends are valid at this point. And then, um, and we've already arranged to have a secondary meeting with the chief of police about it, and so that we can resolve any of the other issues that he may have or any other questions that he has. But again, the, the expression they were using wasn't vulgar, it wasn't offensive in any way, and it wasn't threatening in any way. And I think that's where, I guess, there's somewhat of a threshold there that if you're gonna do things that are threatening, vulgar, or, you know, would shock the conscience of the public. Uh, but that was not what I saw in the pictures and the video that he sent me.
Uh, Mrs., Ms. Rich and Mr. Richardson.
One of the things, Mr. Moore.
Turn your mic on, Ms. Rich.
One of the things that, um, in listening to his comments was that, um, making an Internal Affairs, um, request for, you know, looking into the incident. Um, what is the policy that the city has about, um, a citizen coming in and getting that type of review?
The police department policy is whenever a citizen comes in with a concern, let's say, and, uh, they do try to resolve it, answer questions, whatever it may be. If they cannot sufficiently resolve that incident to the satisfaction of the citizen, and they want to proceed with a formal complaint, then it's required, but they accept the formal complaint and forwarded it up to the office of the chief, who will then assign it for investigation. It could either be back to the precinct for investigation on minor offenses, or to Internal Affairs itself on the more major offenses.
But, um, but initially, that would be anybody who walked in to see whether it could be resolved prior to the official, um, you know, paperwork to file a complaint for an internal review.
That, that is correct, and the, the only, now, understand that a complaint is a statement made by an individual that if true, would be a violation of policy.
Okay.
You know, that, that is a valid complaint. Arguing over a speeding ticket is really an issue for the court.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes, um, I believe, Mr. Moore, that when he got to the police department, then the, the, his first encounter was with the officer who, um, told him he didn't have a complaint. And he insisted that he did have a complaint, and he was, eventually he was able to file this complaint. Uh, it is, it's like three-one-one, the way I see it. If a citizen calls three-one-one and complains about something, uh, it's, it's a job of the people of three-one-one to take the complaint. Give it to whatever department it is, let them make a decision on it, but it's not the decision of the person on the phone to make that determination, and they get to argue with people. Uh, you don't have no complaint, and that, take the complaint. And I think the same thing ought to be true with the police department. If citizens, first of all, citizens don't wanna go to the police department now. There's a lot of citizens, probably far, far more than, the majority of citizens in this city never been inside of a police department and don't intend to go. But if they make their mind up to go to the police department, to them, them, it's serious, the officer may not think as much, but if they got up enough nerve to come down to the police department and complain, to them, it's serious, and I don't think, I think the, the officers there ought to make themselves available to take down whatever they have to say, and let the authorities write them back and say, we looked into it and this is what it is, and not to say, you don't have no complaint. I don't think, I don't think that's how citizens ought to be greeted when they come to the police department with a complaint. And I say they would like, if that is happening, for you all, uh, to cha, to, to change that. The other thing I would like to say is that we labored hard last week to, uh, to get, uh, a resolution passed where they could go down and have a peaceful protest. And, uh, then I started getting calls that the police are there, and they get ready, get ready to make an arrest. So I called the mayor, I called around and said, they, they have, they had arrived. We waived the Norris ordinance for them. And nobody ought to be down there talking about no twenty-five feet. We waived the Norris ordinance. But yet, they were waiting on them with the same twenty-five feet, talking about twenty-five feet. That's why we have, uh, our councilmember Rich put it there, and she labored and waited until we got that passed for them. And they were so, they, they were so sure that they were gonna be confronted. They said, no, it's not good enough for us to know you passed it. We want you to give it to us and write him because the police is not gonna believe it. And they had to wait, we had to wait around until they, they gave him in ha, in his hand what we passed. Didn't mean that when they showed, showed that to the officers, they were talking about 25 feet. So at, at some point, y'all need, need to have a discussion with these officers. If these, if these protesters are legitimate, get out of their way. They need to get out of the way, they don't even need to be up there all in their face. It looked like we're here, we don't want you doing this, and if you make one little mistake, we taking all your... The writer, this issue was founded on, on protests. That's how we got found, that's, that's how, the Boston Tea Party kicked it off protesting, dumped all of the tea in the ocean. That's what they did. So I would like to see a new approach on the part of the police department. If, if, if somebody breaking law, cite what the law is and move on. If nobody breaking the law, leave the people alone. That's how I see it.
And other council members? If not, thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the city council. Thank you, Director Barber, and thank you to the city attorney. I look forward to speaking with you again in the future.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I would like to say, Ms. Moore, when there's an ordinance on this agenda, now, if we're trying to get rid of this 25 feet and go to the resolution noise ordinance, that it'd be based on decibels, not how many feet you are. We did that for the boombox and somehow it got added to where it could also happen to our citizens. We're working on that ordinance now. And hopefully when we finish, the police officer would have a decibel meter. And the law outside of a neighborhood would be the same as inside of a neighborhood. Up until 10 o'clock at night, you can make a certain amount of noise and after 10 o'clock, it would be reduced to another amount. That's what we're working on now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rich.
All right.
Richardson, I'm sorry.
No problem. Ms. Merchant?
Kimberly McCain. Well, I believe that it is no coincidence...
Ms. McCain?
I'm Kimberly McCain.
Thank you.
I do this every time. Kimberly McCain, 1108 New St. Francis Street, Mobile District 2. All right. I believe there is no coincidence that I'm coming right after Mr. Moore here, all right? This is what the Human Relations Commission does. There is no reason he should have to stay here for three hours when he could have brought it to our Human Relations Commission, okay? I have tried multiple times to get us to schedule a meeting, to get people appointed to the commission for a year. It hasn't happened, it hasn't happened. It's been empty promises. So that is why I'm standing here today, one year later. I've got asks for y'all, okay? Number, number one, we need to get people appointed to this commission because this is what it is for. It is to make sure that everybody's voice is heard, they can bring it to us, we can investigate it. We could have went to Mr. Barber, the commission could have. He wouldn't have to go through all of this. And I have to say that there's only been three districts in an entire year that have appointed people to this commission, and that is District 2, which is me, Mr. Manzi did that, District 6, and District 7. No more. So I'm here to ask each and every one of you to actually, let's move this forward. Help me, help this community. In this, we're all in a stage right now, all over America, where we need this, we need this commission here in Mobile to finally happen. I don't know if I need to just contact more people than Mr. Manzi or what, but we, we've gotta have it, we've gotta make this happen. So my asks are, we need to appoint members, all right? We need to schedule a meeting. It's been a year, it's time for our very first meeting. And then funding. If, we need at least $10,000 in this commission. Yes, that would be $2,000 from each and every one of you. All right? Because you have to have meetings, you have to have, we have to have events, we, we, when people come to us. We, we can get out in the community, we would be the community voice. That's how the community speaks, would speak, would be through this Human Relations Commission. So it's been long enough, guys, it's been a year and then way before that. So I agree, sometimes you don't wanna rush through things, but dude, I've waited a year. Your LGBT community, your Black Lives, your every single person has waited a year and nothing has happened. So can we sit here today, can you tell me today if it will and how do we do it? What is our path forward? Can we get funding, can we get council members, I mean, members appointed?
Mr. President?
Yeah, let her finish, Mr. Richardson.
You better finish her.
Let her finish.
I thought she was through.
Yeah, yeah, let her finish.
That's why she was still talking, yeah, I could see that.
Go ahead, Ms. Moore.
I don't have, I'm waiting on answers.
I thought she was.
Okay. Mr. Richardson?
I would like to, I would like to ask her whether or not, no, what is the quorum?
What is my problem?
No, no ma'am, no ma'am, no. What is the quorum? How many people does it take for you to convene a meeting?
Well, I believe there has to be eight members on the, on the commission. And it has to be one member per district.
I know, but it also goes stated in your bylaws, how many people, how many people have to be present in order for you to convene a meeting?
That'd be great to actually have those bylaws, wouldn't it? Since I am on them, I don't have it.
Okay. This, this, I, I thought you were going to say four, 'cause I was gonna say, Lana, I want to reappoint Ms. Levannes Dubose. So my appointees coming.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else?
She has the name as Fisher now. Levannes Dubose Fisher. Okay.
Well, what about the first meeting? Who do I contact? Because after a year, I cannot get Mr. Manzi to reply to me.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Ms. McCain, yeah, I'm, go ahead and make my appointment for next week also, and therefore, there'll at least be a minimum of five right there for y'all can go ahead and have your meeting. And, and pretty much, I need to confirm with the person that they wanna go back on the board. And also in the meantime, obviously the clerk can also can make sure she can get the bylaws to you and everything and go ahead and, they can go ahead and assemble a meeting with everyone.
Who will, who will schedule that meeting?
Obviously the clerk, the city clerk office.
Will schedule a meeting?
Yeah, for the initial meeting for you all.
With the current five appointed members?
Yes, yes ma'am. Once everybody get appointed and we, the council vote next week, and then we'll have a quorum, then we can go forth from there.
Okay. And then what about funding? That is my last ask.
We are now in the process of talking about the budget now.
I would contribute.
Here's, here's another thought.
I'll make a contribution.
If I could comment?
Ms. Rich?
Thank you. If you would call the clerk's office, they'll give you the names and the phone numbers or contact information that we left on our appointments, and you might contact them 'cause they could also help get the word out. And you, if you have an idea of when is a good time for people to meet, because some will be working, might have working hours or whatever, and maybe somebody will open their store, you know, to have you meet. It doesn't have to be at Government Plaza, but you obviously have a lot of initiative with this and I thank you for that. A lot of citizens aren't as engaged as you are. I know the appointment that my office made was somebody who was on it before and was very disappointed that it did not have any real life in it, and so he looks forward to working with you, I'm sure. But it'd be nice if you would contact him and have some outreach with the other one that's from District 7, so, yeah, be great.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Mr. Richardson?
Also suggests that you, you can use the Ben May Library, just make an appointment to use one of their rooms to hold your meeting, or you might wanna go to the Tobin Villa, Virginia Smith Library.
They're closed, man. They're not open.
Library's not open?
No, unfortunately.
Ah.
I understand what you're saying.
Okay, okay.
I do that we can have a meeting, but I have been following procedures by working directly with Mr. Manzi because he was the president and he appointed me last one year ago, July 2nd, to this. But we do need to have a meeting, but we also need funding to have meetings. You've gotta offer drinks, you, we could have events in the, in the park with masks or no mask, however you wanna look at it, but I need...
Ma'am, once you, once you start your meeting, get with your members, y'all write the council an official letter from the meeting. Once you call your group together and you elect your officers, then let whoever, the president of that group, whoever's head, write the council and state the wishes of that group, and I will contribute.
Okay.
I have a, Mr., are you finished, Fred?
Yes.
Mr. Vice President, I have a suggestion. The way we have handled these in the past, maybe this will make it easier for you, our public relations person and/or the clerk contacted all of the members to see what a good or convenient day would be for everybody to meet. Then we sent emails out and said, "The first meeting will be such and such a date." And we held them here in Government Plaza because we have a room, we have water to give everybody, so you don't have to worry about buying drinks and those sorts of things. You come into the meeting, the president chairs it until you elect officers. Once you elect your officers, then you all take over. He'll give you a copy of the bylaws at that point and turn it over to you. If you need to continue meeting at Government Plaza, you just check to make sure the room was available and you got it.
Yeah, okay. All right. So that's the next step, I will wait on an email from the clerk. I would contact...
I think it'd be a good idea for you to either reach out to Ms. Merchant or if Marion is still here, Ms. Steinfelds, and they can walk you through it as well and help you do it, because they will need to reach out to everybody and say, "We're getting ready to kick off the first meeting of the Human Relations Commission and we need to find out from you what is a good date for you." These are the dates we have set, which ones are best. And hopefully you'll get a majority of people who will come on a certain date and you'll have a quorum and you can just go from there. And like I said, we have water, we have drinks, you don't have to worry about that sort of thing. You are a product of this city council, so you can come to our conference room and meet there.
Okay.
That might take some of the issues away from you.
Yes, yes ma'am. One other thing would be a suggestion, could you put it in your newsletters that we will be having the Human Relations Commission and what it's gonna be about?
Yeah, once you get formed...
Once you get organized.
Once you get formed and organized and begin having meetings, that's, that's the time that we would need to put something in our newsletter if somebody wants to come to speak. So go ahead and get organized and then you all can get with us on when you will meet again, if there are any issues that you're getting ready to address, that sort of thing, and we can help you promote it. There's Marion right there.
Talk, talk with Marion right there.
All right, thank you, guys.
All right, thank you, Ms. McCain.
Thank you.
Ms. Merchant?
Gina Erby.
Ms. Erby?
Maybe outside. Is she the lady that had the issues with them?
Okay. If not, Ms. Erby's not present?
I think she's outside.
Oh, okay.
There she is.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Good afternoon.
Hello?
Good afternoon.
My name is Gina Erby, I live at 251 Third Court and at 36603 area code. I wanna first start by saying that as a taxpayer and a resident of Mobile, I was insulted when the city clerk called me and told me that you all told her that I could not speak with city council about my situation. Then I received another call back from your city clerk the same day to say that Chief Batiste would be calling me. Then I received another call back from her on the third day, second day, saying that she had went back to you all and you were gonna see me. My issue is about the Mobile Housing Board. When I was initially told you guys weren't gonna see me, the only thing I thought of was that it was a time for change in the seats up there. I have given a copy of an email or correspondence of all the emails I've had with Mr. Pierce, Cindy Neese, who was the former manager of the housing board, also one correspondence to the mayor's office, and it was interpreted to the mayor's office as wrong. My issue is that since you all have built these new homes or apartments where I live at, the venting has not been separate. So I've been dealing with an issue of loud marijuana coming through my vents, absolutely I have been dealing with this since October of 2019. I came to the housing board in September 2018 after a devastating fire with my first two-week-old grandson and my two daughters. I'm a veteran, I'm a mother of three ages 28, 25, and 18, and a grandmother of an 18-month-old. Not until after a confrontation with Mr. Pi, with, with my neighbor, did Mr. Pierce end up reaching out after the situation had gotten out of hand. The incident had been logged with the security, King Security, and MPD as well. Neither of these institutions gave me a copy of a report. Since 2018, or 2019, October of 2019, my life has been horrible. I have, my, my, I have been, my rights have been violated to a safe and quiet space. I have spent a total, by days and even by weeks, sleeping on my daughter's couch. Three months, three weeks, and five days. This has been up until last week. I'm unable to keep my grandchild there. I've had to cancel a family holiday dinner there and relocate the dinner to my daughter's house. I have physically gotten sick, thrown up, because the scent is so strong. I have my youngest daughter, who's 18, with sickle cell disease. I have more issues there, and one of them being that these things were just built over. When I run bath water, the shower is no problem, but when I run bath water, my tub sits over my stove downstairs, I have an electric stove. When I let the water out of my bathtub, the water comes out of the top onto my stove, completely covers my stove. I have collected three big salad bowls of water that's coming from the top of their ceiling. I just got over a fire that was devastating. Any part of my house where I turn on the water, you can hear drips coming from the As I said, I'm an eight-year veteran and I have not one but two honorable discharges. I also suffer with PTSD, physical and mental impairments. Every day is not a good day. So when I come home and I can smell this from outside my home, or I go inside my home, it takes me to another zone. And I don't know if any of you are familiar with PTSD, but it takes a lot to calm me. I've lost a total of 23 pounds over the last three months. Wasn't trying. I have been told over and over again by Mr. Michael Pierce that I have to prove what I'm going through. that I have to prove what I'm going through. It was proven through King Security. I don't know about the police report, but I talked to Mr. King of King Security personally. And he told me that he had reported this twice to the housing board. When Mobile Police came out, I saw two cars. Nobody reported back to me, although I did talk to a officer, um, uh, one of the second officers that came out. It was a Pennington and, um, I can't think of the other officer's name right now, but he accompanied him coming out, but he wasn't the one that knocked on the door. So I had no correspondence with the police. They didn't call me back to say, "Ms. Erby, we, you know, we smelt it." Uh, I do know that my next-door neighbor wouldn't open the door, but I need to say, um.
Uh, Ms. Erby?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I, I hate to cut you off, but it reached the five minutes. But I do have a couple of questions for you, but I do have a comment before I ask my questions. Again, thank you all for your services that you had given to our great country. Uh, you said that you, um, you are a veteran of the, um, of our great military here. My question is that you taught, you, have you, the city council don't appoint the housing board, and our hands are tied when it comes to that. My question is, have you went to a housing board meeting and talked to the board about the same situation?
We're not even given the information about housing board meetings. They are totally uninvolved to the citizens of that community. I have also given you all a report that my doctor sent back. I have stairs in my house, and I really want you to pay attention to that part.
Ms. Erby, you got to stick to the question that I asked, because you had your five minutes.
Okay.
So I would advise you, if possible, of a public relation person, which is Marion, to get with her, for her to find out exactly when they meet, and really just attend their meetings and everything to address your concerns. The second is that have you talked to the police captain, um, in your precinct about the drug activities in your, your, in your residence, in your community?
No, my issue was proved with King Security. It was validated.
But it's still going to be a police matter and everything. And I advise you also, I thought Director Barbara was going to be here, but, uh, Marion, she can also give you Captain Jones, which is, I believe that you are in the first precinct over there, his information for he can really just look into that situation uh, with the drug activity that's going on in your, your community and everything. So please get with Marion, I think she's standing outside of the door, to get your information, for she can give you the information, uh, about when the housing board meets, and also to give you Captain Jones', um, information also. Did you have something?
Yeah, I just, I, Ms. Erby, again, like Councilman Small, I'd like to thank you for your service, but I don't think we need to put too fine a point on it, and that is that this, the city council has absolutely no control over the housing board. Absolutely no control, and we don't, we can't, and we can't send the police out there either. The police all work for the mayor, the housing board is a separate entity. Uh, I think all of them appointed by the, by the mayor. But we can't tell the housing board to do anything, we can't tell the police to do anything.
Okay. I'd like to respectfully thank you all for your time, and rest assured, you will see this again.
There, there's one other thing if I could add before you go, Ms. Erby. Um, it's my understanding that the board has a representative who is a resident of, I, I don't know which particular parcel, but you might try to, um, and Marion can probably help you identify that person's name, because that's somebody you want to talk to and let her know what's going on in your, in your program. And that would be somebody who sits on the board and makes decisions, so.
Thank you.
Just so I'd let you know that.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Tell, Marion, the lady just went out, don't need to talk to you. I would just like to say for the record, I was in, uh, the city clerk's office when Ms. Erby called. And when she said that, the city clerk refused to take her complaint. It's not true. What the city clerk said is that, "This is not, uh, city business, but I'm going to send an email to all council members and tell them what your situation is. And if they agree for you to be placed on the council agenda, that is their call." And she sent it out, and she told me, she didn't get anyone that said, "Don't put her on the agenda", and she added, "Her on the agenda." But, you know, she said that she called and the city clerk told her that, "I'm not going to put you on the..." She didn't, she didn't do that. She said she had to check with the council, and she sent an email to all of us saying, "This is the situation, this is what you want to talk about. Do you want me to add her or not?" She told me she got no response, which meant, "Add her." And that's how she got on the, on the council agenda.
I don't believe she's going to come back in.
I don't either.
Uh, Mr. Merchant?
Brendan Jackson? Is he outside?
Yeah, Brendan Cam Jackson. Just wait just for a minute, just in case he's outside.
Can they hear us outside?
That's the question I have.
Yeah, they're going to hear, they're going to hear outside.
Do we have Brendan Cam Jackson?
Good afternoon, Councilman. Uh, my name is, uh, y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we're good.
Uh, my name is Brendan Jackson, uh, you may know me as Cam Jackson. Uh, played football at Davidson High School. I graduated from Citadel, uh, with a business degree in, uh, Business Administration. Right now, I'm currently working on my master's degree. Uh, I've been traveling across the US, traveled around the world, and unfortunately due to COVID-19, I have been displaced back here, my hometown of Mobile, Alabama. Well, I'm coming to speak to you guys about today.
Can we get your address, Mr. Jackson, I have to cut you off?
Uh, 751 South Dillon Street, 36603, uh, Councilman Massey, uh, is my councilman. I actually spoke to him last week about this issue.
Uh, thank you.
Uh, the issue is, like I said, I've traveled to many cities across the US. Uh, have many classmates who are doing great things around this country. Yet when I come back to Mobile, uh, classmates I had at Davidson, this, I was in the epic program, so we're a bit, we have higher goals, higher expectations. When I talk to those classmates of mine, when I talk to them about Mobile, what are they doing in Mobile? They're like, "It's nothing for us here in Mobile," and I can say the same thing. There's no opportunities for young, educated adults in Mobile. Yes, we have the workforce, yes, we have Airbus, we have Amazon, we have all this, this, this. They get their, I know that's not a Mobile thing, that's their organization. But here in the city of Mobile, we have the airport authority. We have, uh, Mobile Water and Sewer System. We have all these other things in Mobile that could create opportunities for talented people to stay here. Like, I'm sure you've had plenty of conversations with highly educated young men and women throughout the city. And you ask them, and they, and they ask you like, you know, "What's the best thing I can do?" I'm pretty sure y'all tell them, "Hey, go to, go to New Orleans, go to Atlanta, go to Texas, go to this, go to..." Why are we telling them to flee? Why, why are we telling them to leave here? Can y'all ask me that? It's sad. We are letting highly educated, highly talented individuals, and not just black, but white, Hispanic, Asian. And this is the, this is Mobile, Alabama now. We all take great pride in Mobile, everybody. You go to another city, you go to another state, you say, "I'm from Mobile, Alabama." Everybody has the same passion, but yet, when people of my age and of my education and character, when we come down here, it's like, "Well, why aren't you still here? Like, what opportunities do I have?" And I have looked now, this is before COVID-19, this is before COVID-19 now. I understand the situation that we're in now, but while we're all here together, because I know people who have came back from college, they're, they can't go to school, so they're back here. But when things start to open up, Mobile, Alabama has a unique opportunity to allow the younger generation to come in and lead Mobile. Think about, think about my generation. We are blessed enough to have you all raise us, so we know about the values and traditions of our city. And we also understand what the world is changing into today. Think about social media. How many of you all are, you could say, you could, you are a social media expert? And how many of you in this age group? My age group, that's all we do, social media. That's the, that's the future. And we also have the same values that you all taught us. So like I said, like, well, there's a lot I want to say, this, unfortunately, this is not the right environment to, to say it, because I know a lot of you probably have had conversations with people my age, and they're probably off somewhere doing great things in other cities. Why can't they do great things here? Where are those opportunities? Uh, like I said, I've done my research, I've looked online, I've been to several career fairs here in Mobile. This is like I said, before COVID-19, several career fairs here in Mobile, handing out my resume. You know what they told me? It told me this. "Wow, man, it's a really good resume. I, I see you have a great background, have a good head on your shoulders." You know, "We don't have that type of stuff here in Mobile. Why don't you go to New Orleans? Why don't you go to Atlanta?" I was like, "Why can't I do it here?" No answer. I think that's sad. I really do. And like I said, I wish I could speak to each and every person here individually and just get your, you know, point of view from this, because I know I'm not the only one who's thinking this. I know I'm not. Everybody else talked to you and said the same thing, and there's no clear answer, because if we had a clear answer, somebody would already had brought it up. And, uh, I mean, that's all I got to say. I'll, I plan to come back and possibly have a conversation on the phone to each and every one of the city council members, if that's an opportunity that I have to do, but that's all I got to say.
Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. Rich?
I am so glad this young man decided to come down to an official city council meeting. Let me start off by saying, if you are unconnected, I don't care what degree you have, where you go, if you are unconnected, you are out of touch.
Yes, sir, I understand it.
But, but I'm not, I'm, I'm talking to, right now, we are on Facebook Live, we are on YouTube, we're going to be on Channel 6, talking to the world, and you, but the world. Do you know where the Mobile County Personnel Board is?
Uh, yes, sir.
All of our jobs are listed there at the Mobile County Personnel Board. And if you get a copy of my newsletter, I have a link to the Mobile County Personnel Board listing every vacant job that's up there. And what you need to do, when I say you, I'm talking about whoever applied, we need to do to get one of those jobs. And if you go and talk to most of the people that, uh, who claim they can't find nothing, it's depending on where they're looking. Let, let, let me say, 19, since 1997, I have been, I go to, I have five major communities, and I, I go in a circuit. I go to one, go to, I keep going around. And when I come, I'm going to have leading people from the industry. Wait a minute, and I send a letter to every resident in that particular area before I come. Every home get a letter. I'm coming, and I'm telling who I'm bringing with me, and I'm going to tell them what information they're going to give to the public. Okay, I'm going to have leading people from the industry to come to talk about jobs. Ninety-nine percent of the time, I don't have nobody your age to show up. People come in and talk about all kind of big jobs. Your age group? I've been doing this since 1997. I've asked them to bring their human resource department with them, and so they can, um, pass out applications, resumes, or whatever. I have grandmama them and mama them that say, "Can I take this home with me?" Because no young people showed up. Know how come? Because they are un, they're connected. They're connected to the social media. They can tell you everything about Facebook, Twitter, they can tell you everything. There's no jobs up there. There's not one job up there. Mm-mm. But they're not connected to what they need to be connected to to get these jobs. I also bring Bishop State, who will pay you, pay you to come and take the course to be a lineman for Alabama Park Company, starting out with more than $40,000. Not one showed up, not one. Not one showed up. Go down to Bishop State College on Dolphin Island Parkway, and just look there, they got the linemen going up the lines right now. They got them big old poles out there, and they going up, and you won't find three people on those poles that look like you. But everyone of them got a phone, and all of them, they're all hooked into social media, trying to find out who is doing what. None of that's going to help them. They are unconnected to what they need to be connected to. They are unconnected. It's a lot, my son just moved here about four months ago from Atlanta, Georgia, he and his wife. He has got him a great job, she has a great job, and they going on about that business. It's depending on where you look at it. Nobody going to come and wake you up, give you no shower, and, and, and how you? I went all the way down under to Australia to recruit Auster. And Auster, then we talked with, with the state of Alabama to create a place that would train workers to go to these various places free. About over there. About over there, nobody willing to put forth no effort to get hired. So, my experience has been, if you want, you got to go and get it, but you got to go to the right places to get it. ADT would train you to be workforce-ready, making $40,000 and $50,000 to start off with. ADT, Bishop State would train you to be workforce-ready. But if you got a degree to teach, then you got to go see the Mobile County Public School system, but what, some other system to do that, and now, now you, I can't help you with that. But you got to get connected. I will start off by going to the Mobile County Personnel Board. I read that board, you don't have to go during, today, go at night. The board is out there, lit up, read the board and see what, and this board going, covers municipalities all over Mobile County, Centennial, Mount Vernon, uh, Chickasaws, Saraland, Satsuma, all of, all of their jobs are located on that board, and they're all hiring. You got to go look at the board, you got to put in. And police officers, what, what, man, farmers and police officers, they's always open. I'm saying, got to be connected. Thank you, Mr. President.
I, I have a question of Mr. Jackson.
Ms. Rich?
Thank you, thank you for being here. Um, when you mentioned about opportunities for young, highly educated, and with unique skills, can you, can you give us some more details on that, what you mean by that?
For sure, like, uh, like Councilman was saying, there are opportunities to learn a skill and be hired onto the workforce. However, there are people who, they are individuals from Mobile who go to other universities. So when we do that, we're going for four years, we're not connected with our city. We're not. But we're going to learn better skills and higher education. And so if we want to transfer that education and skills back down here, we're placed right into the workforce. Like you said, I got to go, I got to go train again with ADT. I spent six years in college. Why, why are there no opportunities for internships for managing, training positions? Those are not there. I looked, I, I looked on that website that you just said.
So you, you're saying you have, you have a, an undergraduate degree and you're also pursuing a graduate degree?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask you in what, in what capacity?
Uh, Master's in Business Administration.
Business, okay. So banking or something along those lines?
Human Resources, uh, Media Management, all of those, those positions are not, not available.
Send me, send me your resume.
I, I would definitely do that. I'll email all y'all my resume. Um, what was the question again?
No, I, I meant, when you, when you say there's no opportunities, I mean, if people have a degree in something, there's usually something in this market that needs to be filled by that level of degree.
So, for, uh, I've done my research, for Mobile, the main markets that are usually open, and we have South Alabama that does an amazing job of producing this, is medical field and education. That's pretty much it.
And engineering, and we have a business college that's fully certified too, where people go into banking or financial planning, insurance work. So, I hear you.
Yeah, and like I said, I've, I've done the work. I've been to, uh, the job place on Springfield, talked to the man, sat down, showed him my resume. He was like, "Look, man, the jobs we have here is not what you're looking for, not, not with your education." And I've talked to several, you know, friends that they've come down here, Mobile done the same thing. They go to Birmingham, they go to Huntsville, Pensacola, New Orleans, find better opportunities instantly. And it's amazing because Mobile, we're a tri-state area. We have four states surrounding us. Yet people my age with higher education are fleeing. Like, what, what are we doing to keep that talent in here so that we can grow from within? Like you said, like it's, it's sad. I, I agree. When I go to these things, I don't see nobody my age. Nobody. So I, it's sad. It really is. But what are we doing to create opportunities for successful, higher learning individuals to remain here, tell our colleagues, and they will start growing from within, just like that.
Uh, Mr. Jackson, I had asked the, uh, Mariner, uh, to have, uh, Ms. Henderson to stay to address the concerns. I can honestly say I, I understand what you're talking about. Uh, right before I got on council, I was saying the same thing that you were saying. There's nothing here, you know, for the younger people to draw them back to, uh, Mobile. But when I got in this seat, I see a whole different story. And pretty much as Mr. Richardson stated, if you're not really connected, uh, you don't, won't know. I wasn't connected when I, before I got on this seat. Uh, have I done my job as a council member trying to get people connected? Yes, I have. As this as well, Mr. Richardson, I have held many fa, job fairs in my district and sent out notice to every household in my district. And when they come to the job fairs, nobody really don't show up at all. Well, I have all these industries here, everything that's in Mobile County just about at my job fair, and attendance will be very low and then low. I don't know no way else that I can do, especially when I'm sending out notice to every household in the city of Mobile. I will ask that if you can get with, um, Ms., our Marion, our, um, Public Relations Person and, um, have her to give you Ms. Henderson's number, where she can go down and tell you exactly what the mayor and administration have been doing. Since, since I know I've been on council and trying to make sure they can draw younger people back down to the city of Mobile. But if the city is currently is doing that, the mayor has been leading a charge of doing that. And again, the person, Ms. Henderson, she was here earlier, but I guess because she might have another meeting, she didn't, wasn't able to stay later to address some of your question that you have. But Ms. Marion, she would give Ms. Henderson your number for you can get in contact with her, but she can let you know all the, what the city is doing to draw people back to Mobile.
All right, I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you so much for coming down.
Mr. Jackson, you're gonna find that, uh, and you've been messaging Facebook by the Chamber of Commerce. Um, just look for that message. Yep.
And they have three, three thousand members over there.
Justice Washington.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Justice Washington. I'm a resident of Mobile. I stay at thirty-eight hundred Outley Drive, three six six nine three. And today I want to talk about reform. I was taught that America was the greatest country in the world and based on military and economic power, that was a fact at one point. I was taught that the United States of America was a democratic society until I realized the Pledge of Allegiance. We say, unto the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible. The same God divided from politics and schools even though we opened our meetings with Christian prayer. No propaganda, just our facts. As a capitalistic republic, we pr, we pride ourselves on making money. We were taught early that cash is king. The capitalists of this country thought they had all the money and that mean they had all the power. Until COVID nineteen played the world just to show the capitalists that all the money in the world can't save you from death. No propaganda, just facts. With these conditions, I understand that America is no longer the greatest country. Right now, we're an embarrassment to the rest of the world. When you look at a foreign country who has free healthcare, so all the citizens, young, old, rich and poor are taken care of, it is clear that we need social and economic reform so that we as a country can regain our status as the most powerful in the world. No propaganda, just facts. In the summer of twenty sixteen, a teenager by the name of Michael Moore was shot and killed by a police officer in Mobile. That chain of events brought along the Citizens Review Board, which was comprised, which comprises of seven people appointed by the seven city council members in order to combat police misconduct in our city. From twenty sixteen to twenty twenty, that review board has only met two times out of four years, and that's unacceptable. Raise your hand if you as a city council member actually called the person you appointed to get down to the bottom of what happened to the protesters. One, two out of seven. No propaganda, just facts. Now, I can play the blind game all day and say that y'all fault for not picking the right people for the job. I can blame the people y'all pick and say that it's their fault for not taking this responsibility more seriously. And I'm sure a lot of people would agree with me, but behind that comes the argument that a city councilman's job is harder than it looks and a lot of people would agree with that. Maybe even me, if the details ever surfaced. But I'm not here for propaganda arguments. I'm here for facts and solutions. The fact is, the Citizens Review Board has not done well and proposal of restructure is needed. And if your job is so hard, then you should make it easier on yourselves by relinquishing that responsibility to the people. Today, I have with me a petition to restructure the Citizens Review Board with two hundred and one signatures. And I brought an extra pen and I'd be honored if the city council members will also sign my petition in agreement that the board does need restructuring. According to AL dot com, our mayor made this statement. Since the shooting of Michael Moore, the city of Mobile has taken unprecedented steps to ensure transparency, incorporating lessons learned from other communities that have experienced similar tragedies. Stimson said, and I quote, "Our prayers remain with all the, all the families affected in this incident. We continue to work as a city to strengthen the relationship between law enforcement and the citizens we serve. We remain committed to the vision of making Mobile the safest, most business and family-free city in America. And I can't help but to feel that anybody who opposes without a better solution, does it want positive change to happen in our city? And because of that, a lack of social awareness, you just made our mayor out of a liar." So which one do I want to sign first?
Yeah, Mr. Washington, make sure, you know, we appreciate you for coming down. If you could just leave us a copy of your petition and everything and for us, we can just, you know, look through it and stuff. You can leave a copy with the city clerk and everything. Um, any council member having any questions?
I just have, I just have a comment, Mr. President, if you don't mind.
Mr. Dave.
I was in pretty much, once, once the commission started going, I was in pretty much constant contact with my appointee, who by the way, I think was a heck of a good appointee. Some of the, uh, individuals on that commission were better than others. But I, I was in constant contact with my appointee and I actually went to a number of the meetings and the meetings moved all around the city. They had them, they had them in all seven council districts. They had them at different times. They had them all over the place. And what happened? No one came to the meetings. That's why the commission disbanded, because no one came to the meetings. Thank you.
Mr. President. Ms. Richardson.
I would just say that, oh, they never did call a meeting for District One. Now, some of them attended my meeting and introduced themselves, but they never announced that they were holding a commission meeting for the public to come in District One.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Ms. Ms. Warriger.
Uh, my appointee was the chairman of the commission and we held meetings throughout the city. Um, he got very frustrated at lack of attendance, lack of interest, and some of that was on the part of the commission members themselves. Um, when meetings were being held, I at least put the information in my newsletter, especially when it was held in my district. And like Mr. Dave said, nobody showed up. So, you know, I, I can understand their frustration because they were working and trying to do what they thought they were supposed to do, but yet nobody else seemed interested, so they pretty much just gave up and disbanded.
If I could interject something, I'm not.
Well, no, you're not arguing with me.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not.
I, I am, no, sir.
And Ms. Washington, we, we got council rules. We give each person five minutes. And then if the council have question, they can ask the person that comes down. If you have anything additional to say, you can sign up for next week. But again, that's, that's just the council rules for everybody and everything, you know.
I rightly only have one sentence.
No, sir.
Yeah, Ms. Washington, I'm sorry. Yeah. And other council members.
I, I would like to ask, uh, uh, Council Vice President, uh, was there, to your knowledge, did the commission hold an official meeting in District Three?
Yes, it did. At my comma, Baptist Church on Montrose Street. And I sent out letters to the area residents inviting them. And again, the meeting was slim also.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't have one.
Yeah, if, if I could comment.
Ms. Rich.
Yeah, um, my appointee became chair, um, at one point and was always in touch with my office about, uh, the meetings. And he too got very frustrated in that, um, there was a lot of misunderstanding on, on what the board would do. But when it came to coming out to each of the districts, um, some members didn't even attend if it wasn't, you know, in their, their district. They couldn't get a quorum. I think that started happening towards, you know, why it disbanded. They just, the group itself, um, did not function. So, um,
Yeah, but no one came to the meetings.
And no one came. I know I advertised it big time in my district newsletter for a couple of weeks in advance to let people know they were meeting at the senior center. And they, they, we did it in, in areas where people could meet. We didn't have any COVID to worry about back then. So it was wide open and they didn't attend. So.
Yeah, I mean, who, who wants to, who wants to be giving up
An evening.
Their time and their evening to go there and, and sit and no one shows up for the meeting?
Right. That's what I'm saying.
Nobody shows up to the meeting because nobody trusts y'all.
Washington, yeah, I, I try not to be rude at all with you. But, uh, if you have any comments, you know, towards the council, you can emails or either sign up for next week, cause generally they come back in states and everything. But the council don't ask no question. It's just our rules and the rules been placed for many years.
The point is, nobody trusts y'all though.
Mr. Washington.
That's why y'all meetings suck.
Mr. Washington.
Y'all just gotta let the people handle it at this point.
I respect duty, sir.
Can I pass this petition on and go and go? Y'all said enough.
Reggie Hill.
Mr. Hill, you know about the five minutes, right? You come down and argue with your council member next week.
Oh, really? Uh, Mr. Vice President, members of the council, um, and also our mayor to director of public works, citizen stakeholders of City of Mobile. Good afternoon, Reggie Hill, one thousand seven, um, Center Street. I thought the citizens of Mobile were finessed after the protests a few weeks ago. But today, I mean, this, this has been something. And I mean, we've had doctors who've spoken upwards of fifteen minutes quoting information from all over the country, but yet we couldn't have the specifics of our own county, of our own city. We got statistics all over the country, but we couldn't get the specifics right here. Also saw where somebody came down talking about the Human Relations Commission and I was supposed to know this for two and a half years. I mean, we got folks setting, setting our places to have meetings, giving money, making new appointees. And we've come down here and talked about this two and a half years. And now we finally see something different. And then we also see where the administration is willing to have meetings over choke, over choke. Where we had citizens who even have letters from the president addressed to the administration. We haven't heard a peep. Now, I rise today, Mr. Vice President, to highly encourage the citizens of Mobile, Alabama, to act in a thoughtful manner, a thoughtful manner, while being courageous enough to resist panic. Now, we must learn to walk in our dominion, uh, if we wish to make the best decisions for our people and not for our ideology. Now, there were several things I signed up to speak about today, but because of time, I'm gonna get to the very last one and just do agenda items. And so I want to start off with this one. Uh, let me make one simple statement regarding the curfew. It's unfortunate that instead of insisting, or excuse me, investing resources into worthwhile behavior intervention programs, we would rather put a Band-Aid on this cancer of juvenile delinquency. I do not understand that. We're gonna put curfews and then certain news stations report it is for certain districts of the city. It's not even for all the areas. We got certain districts. But yet we'll, um, appropriation of six point one million dollars of capital improvement projects. Uh, I should always advocate for equity when these, when these resources are dispersed. We must do that. So, uh, will any materials that identify the production timeline for CIP projects in twenty-one, four, four, eight through twenty-one, four, fifty, uh, be available to the public along with the amount of manpower and resources being appropriated per district? All right. So last week, we learned that certain areas of the city are facing safety concerns, uh, by lack of common amenities. Uh, we have long known that hardship is related to public and affordable housing, yet today we're potentially gonna spend seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars, seventy-six cent on equipment, on equipment. And we don't have a bucket truck to put in lights. So I just want to know how much a bucket truck would actually cost? You know, what is the rationale for spending this much money on the equipment? Is there something wrong with the equipment we already have? Like, I mean, for this, nearly a million dollars? Um, we potentially gonna spend forty-nine thousand to, to put up a motorcycle pad for the police. And we, we don't have the same resources being allocated to just create the projects that could work with the administration and members of our public safety department so that we can alleviate these things we see all the time, all the time. I know my time is, is one. I'm, I'm doing my best to get to it. What is the operational, a long-term benefit of purchasing fifty thousand dollars of computer software, you know, with the agenda items zero, one, four, eight? I just want to know what is it gonna do? Then we, um, we saw zero, eight, four, two on the agenda, uh, seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars for a hundred and eighty-five pounds of shoes, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars a piece for some shoes. So I'll end with this, cause I'm not gonna have time to complete all of my comments. But our priorities have got to get in better order here. And it is disappointing to see the things that are happening concerning these masks. I appreciate the boldness and the courage of the distinguished gentleman who is chair of that rules committee. Uh, because there should be an exemption. I, I don't understand how we can make people wear masks in certain places, but how we saw people come down here about a parking lot issue and then now they're gonna have to wear masks in the parking lot. There's a, another, uh, exemption too at the end of that. The last, um, the last section of that page, the last page, it's got all these exemptions. I need somebody to amend it and put something in there with faith as well. We gotta start speaking over this thing. That's what the problem is. And I'm not gonna wear one, not because I'm disrespectful as a doctor came down here and alluded, but because my faith tells me something different. I appreciate your time to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Ms. Murch.
CIP resolutions held over. If you don't mind, I'll take them together.
Yes.
Please, Stu.
Twenty-one, four, four, eight, authorized contract with C Thornton for the twenty-twenty CIP bridge maintenance and repairs. Twenty-one, four, four, nine, authorized contract with geotechnical engineering testing to perform testing services for citywide resurfacing. And twenty-one, four, fifty, authorized contract with Mobile Asphalt for the twenty-twenty CIP citywide resurfacing.
Second.
Properly moving, second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed, passes.
Resolutions held over and I'll take all these together.
All of them.
Zero, one, zero, one, four, fifty-one, authorized baseline services agreement with Downtown Mobile District Management Corporation. Zero, one, four, fifty-two, authorized agreement with Aldot for the installation of LED streetlights along state routes. Zero, eight, four, fifty-three, approved item-based bid award from emergency equipment professionals for red rack gear storage components for the fire department. Zero, eight, four, fifty-four, approved item-based bids for decorative poles, fixtures and globes from Southern Lighting and Traffic Systems. Zero, eight, four, fifty-five, approved purchase order to Sun South for four mowers. Zero, eight, four, fifty-six, approved purchase order to Auto Nation Ford Mobile for two Ford pickup trucks. Zero, eight, four, fifty-seven, approved purchase order to Sampson Equipment for Vector Sewer Cleaner Truck. Zero, eight, four, fifty-eight, approved purchase order to Toomey Equipment Company for a tractor backhoe front-end loader. Zero, eight, four, fifty-nine, approved purchase order to Sun South for eight zero turn mowers. Zero, eight, four, sixty, approved purchase order to Polaris Sales for a utility vehicle. Zero, eight, four, sixty-one, approved purchase order to Cronus Incorporated for annual renewal of workforce telestaff and associated HR management software. Zero, nine, four, sixty-two, transfer monies from one capital account to another to enclose a police department motorcycle, motorcycle parking pad. And twenty-three, four, sixty-three, three, accept deeds for the acquisition of Rideway for the McGregor Avenue widening project.
So moved.
Properly moving, second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed, passes.
Ordinances being introduced for the first time, fourteen, zero, eighteen through eighty-four, zero, two, one.
Said ordinances will be carried over by pursuant to council rules.
Consent resolutions being introduced for the first time, forty-four, sixty-six through sixty-four, seventy-eight. Consent resolutions being introduced for the first time forty-four-sixty-six through sixty-four-seventy-eight.
Order to extend the rules to, um, for consideration of resolutions. Four, four-six-six-two, six-oh-four, seven-eight. Do we have any exceptions? I don't see any.
I don't think so. Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Forty-four-sixty-three, six through forty-four-seventy-four are fixing the cost for the demolition of structures at six-oh-five Patton Avenue, seventeen fifty-nine Waterford Street, fourteen-sixty-two Fairfield Street, twenty-nine-oh-five Sherwood Drive South, twenty-nine-eighteen Berkeley Avenue, five-oh-seven Uker Street, twenty-fifty-eight Kentwood Lane, thirty-sixty-one Pleasant Valley Road and four-oh-six Booker Street. Fifty-eight-four-seventy-five and four-seventy-six add Davis Outdoor Services and restored foundation to the list of private contractors to evade public nuisances. Fifty-eight-four-seventy-seven declared weeks noxious group sixteen-oh-five. And sixty-four-seventy-eight approve award of special bonus to the June firefighter of the month, Fire Service Captain Charles B. Andrews. So moved.
Second.
Properly moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Passes.
CIP resolutions being introduced for the first time twenty-one-four-seventy-nine and thirteen-four-eighty.
Said resolutions will hold over pursuant to council rules.
Resolutions being introduced for the first time zero-one-four-eight-one through sixty-four-eight-seven.
Said resolutions will hold over pursuant to council rules.
Call for public hearings. Forty-one-four-eight-eight call for a special meeting of the city council to, to discuss matters relating to the Mobile Police Department policies and procedures scheduled for July night at four o'clock PM.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Passes.
Announcements?
Uh, District One, Mr. Richardson. Uh, Ms. Williams? Ms. Gregory?
No, no thanks.
Ms. Rich?
No, thank you.
Mr. Dave?
No, sir.
Uh, get the motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
So moved.
Proper motion is second in discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Meeting adjourned.
This is might be a wreck.
I think so. Mm-hmm, we did. I was ready to jump out the window.